Total Info Sports
...
Good evening. Welcome to this evening's City Council meeting. We just did come out of executive session, so the meeting has already been opened and the roll call has been done. I do want to let the record show that Mr. McEldowne is with us now. So the entire council is here this evening. And the first thing that we're going to take care of is a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. However, for the moment of silence, Mr. Douglas has something he would like to add.
Yes, want to keep one out there. Young man, Gabe Scott, passed away last week. And keep his family in your prayers.
Okay, Mr. Bullock?
Yes, also Representative Dominic Moreno's grandmother passed away last week, and I'd like to keep his family in your prayers also.
And Mr. Teeter?
Yes, very dear to my heart, the Arizona firefighters, all nineteen of them that were killed yesterday, I would like to keep them in our prayers also.
And I would like to add, Mr. Bud Thompson's wife Shirley passed away about a week ago. Bud Thompson has been a lifelong member of this community, and he served a lot of years on the Board of Adjustment and some other boards. So I've asked the city on our behalf of the council to get a card and maybe a food item or something over to Mr. Thompson for his loss. And I think that we need to do the same for Mr. Moreno's grandmother. So please keep all of those families in your prayers. I think it's also important, because Fourth of July is this Thursday, that we keep in our prayers all of the young men and women that are fighting for our freedoms in this country, and for those families who have lost loved ones because of the wars overseas and the protection of our rights. So keep that in mind. It's great that we're coming up on our Independence Day, but it's important to understand why we have those freedoms and to keep those folks in our prayers. So with that, please stand for a moment of silence and follow that by the Pledge of Allegiance. [INAUDIBLE] A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I'll go ahead and ask the staff to pass the microphone around so the public can introduce themselves.
Hans Fattler.
Betty Thomas.
Thank you.
Louis Apollinar.
Ricky Martinez.
Martin Brumides.
Mike Baker.
Thank you.
Guernos Erma.
Dominic Mano.
Gene Lethal, Board of Adjustment.
Joy Bishop.
Harvis Thomas.
Emmanuel Zamora.
Lisette Zamora.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Troy Smith, Police Department.
Roger Tenenbaum, Finance.
Chris Kramer, Community Development.
Carolyn Keith, Parks and Recreation.
Walt Williams, Economic Development.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here this evening. First item of business is going to be Proclamations and Recognitions. We have the July 2013 Parks and Recreation Month. I'd like to invite the Recreation Director Carolyn Keith forward to accept a proclamation. And I would like the city attorney to read that proclamation. Proclamation reads, "Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Commerce City, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community; and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for individuals with disabilities, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens; and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community; and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors; and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month; and whereas the City of Commerce City recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, on behalf of City Council, hereby proclaim that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in the City of Commerce City, and encourage all citizens to share the invaluable benefits that come from parks and recreation." Thank you. Proclamation's been read. What are the desires of this council? Mr. Teeter?
I so move to approve Proclamation 13-11, 2013, July Parks and Recreation Month.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second item.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the proclamation as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Carol, would you have a few words you'd like to say, and we'll come down and honor you? I don't have the proclamation up here, but there it is. We have it.
We certainly appreciate council's support of July as Parks and Recreation Month, and would hope that you all have the opportunity to get out and visit one of our parks, trails, open space, not only the month of July, but throughout the year, and would, I guess I'll take a moment to invite everyone, council, as well as all of our residents or folks watching tonight, to come to our July 4th celebration, Fourth Fest, in cooperation with the Colorado Rapids here on the Victory Crossing site at Dick's Sporting Goods Park. We have activities beginning at 5:00 on Thursday, July 4th, up through the game time with fireworks beginning at 10:00. So it's a great opportunity for folks to get out, enjoy the activities, and celebrate July 4th.
Great, thank you very much. Everybody will join me down front? Yes, sir?
I would recommend doing the next proclamation and then come down and do a photo for each?
Good call. We'll call you back up, young lady. We're going to take care of this next one. This is you as well, so just stay there, don't go anywhere. Day of Play proclamation. Mr. Galen, please read the proclamation.
Proclamation reads, "Whereas play is a valuable part of a child's healthy development and is a crucial factor in the overall well-being of children, as well as people of all ages; and whereas a productive, healthy, and physically fit child becomes a socially competent and proactive adult; and whereas children who play do better in school and develop cognitive skills that are linked to learning and academic performance; and whereas unstructured, spontaneous, and self-motivated play is on the decline nationwide, and it is important to reverse that trend; and whereas the City of Commerce City acknowledges children are one of our most important resources, therefore we must ensure safe and accessible play spaces for all children; and whereas the city promotes children, as well as people of all ages, spend time outside at parks, trails, and playgrounds with family and friends; and whereas the City of Commerce City will join Playful Cities USA in celebrating Play Day by hosting a free family fun zone at the annual Fourth Fest celebration, July 4 at Dick's Sporting Goods Park. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, on behalf of City Council, hereby proclaim Thursday, July 4, 2013, as a day of play in the City of Commerce City, and encourage all citizens to participate and do their part in promoting active living and healthy lifestyles for our youth."
Thank you. Mr. Amador?
Move to approve Proclamation 13-13.
Thank you.
Day of Play proclamation.
Mr. McEldowne?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the proclamation as read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. And I can't agree more that when we were kids, we used to only have a few channels on TV. Most of the time it was news, and we had to go outside and find something to do. So we were out playing all the time. And nowadays, I mean, all my kids, they, you know, cell phones, computer games, it's hard to get them outside to play. So I'm glad that we're doing this proclamation and encouraging our youth in our community to get out and play, and the participation at the Fourth Fest is a good idea. So, did you want to say anything about Play Day before we come down?
I would thank council for supporting the proclamation in recognition of our Day of Play, which is actually in support of the city's Playful City USA designation. So again, thank you.
I kind of like the Play Day. That's all right. Everybody, you want to join me down front, please?
Say one.
Say one?
Say cheese, sorry. Say cheese. Other one, big smile, cheese. Perfect.
Want to remind everyone that I'll call your name. Want you to come up. You'll be allowed three minutes to give your presentation or your concerns to the council. Please make sure you state your name and address for the record. We're going to start off with Lisette Zamora. Please come up. I understand you're going to read your essay if I were mayor, and I need you to state your name and address for me, please.
Lisette Zamora, 6500 East 88th Avenue, Lot 223. First of all, I would like to thank everyone for your support in this whole process. It has been a successful journey for me, and thank you all for supporting me.
Just so everyone out there knows, Lisette was actually the, one of the winners of the CML this year if I were mayor. She was awarded in our city, but didn't read her essay on that night. So it would be wonderful if everyone can hear this, and you were one of four winners throughout the entire state. So it's quite the honor. I know myself, and Mr. Bullock, Mr. Douglas was also there, Ms. Elliott, I'm not sure if she is at the luncheon, but we were all very honored to have you there as the winner for Commerce City, so thank you.
Thank you.
And you, I want to let your mom know it'd be okay if you come up here so you can videotape her front while she's saying her essay rather than her back. It's okay? All right. Go right ahead.
Okay. With great power comes great responsibility. As presidents guide the countries and governors govern the states, the mayors work profoundly on building bright and efficient communities worldwide. As a crucial figure in a town or city, a mayor is responsible for passing or overseeing local laws written by the city council. Mayors, also known as commanders, encounter obstacles that affect the general public. If I was mayor of Commerce City, Colorado, I would improve the city's education system, work to improve the safety issues, and make the urban area energy efficient, resulting in the unity of the community. As the population of the human race increases, success in education should expand, creating a hardworking and extraordinary society. As a mayor of Commerce City, Colorado, I will do my part in creating leaders for the future. I will work for advanced technology in schools in order to update the knowledge of the fellow students. I will better the lunches in order to nourish the minds of the young scholars. Commerce City often provides planned school lunches, making the students wait for an alternative meal in their homes. With a plentiful appetite, a student is ready to concentrate in the curricular classes. As mayor of Commerce City, Colorado, I plan to create a battle for after-school activities. After-school activities will include tutoring, sports, and drama clubs, furthermore offering an alternative to negative activities and influences. Knowledge will guide society and life and change the world. Throughout Commerce City, there is an abundance of children, giving a reason to improve our safety issues. As mayor of this busy town, I plan to include a play area in each neighborhood in order for children to run free and feel the wind on their faces. I plan to create community events that are kid-friendly where they are free to enjoy their childhood while raising awareness about the community. I plan to increase the number of speed bumps in Commerce City to reduce the number of accidents involving children. The children are the future, so as a town, we must reach out to them to ensure a safe and well-educated future. As mayor of Commerce City, Colorado, I will ensure that our community is energy efficient. Planting trees to purify the air we breathe will unquestionably be planted around town, and I will make sure that the grass we step on is as green as the leaves of the forest. Littering will be a top priority if I am mayor in order to eliminate the excessive amount of trash. I will make sure that everyone in Commerce City has a recycle bin, resulting in a cleaner and more energy-efficient community. Provided the fact that the population of the human race is increasing rapidly, the presidents and
I'd vote for ya. Thank you very much for coming in this evening. Next, I would like to call Louis Appaliner. Hopefully I didn't mess that up too bad.
No, not too bad, mayor.
Thank you.
Louis Appalinar.
Appalinar.
Yes, and I live at 929 Kalman Street, Denver, Colorado.
Thank you.
And I'm here concerning the North Metro Line about a company that might be working on the line.
Okay.
All right, my name is Louis Appalinar. I work for Rocky Mountain Reinforcement. It's a company that installs rebar on major projects. I was working at Denver Union Station project. The reason I am here is to let you know, this company is a very bad company. They cut all the workers' prevailing wage salaries from $22.50 to $15.00 an hour. They also had us running with the rebar on the project. They didn't provide us water on the project, and they didn't give us breaks. And we need to be treated like human beings, so we are concerned that this company may be working on the North Metro Line project. We don't want Commerce City to support this injustice, and that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Well, before you leave, I think it's important that I have a little dialogue with you. First and foremost, that contract will be let by RTD, not Commerce City. That, that particular project will include Thornton, North Glen Commerce City, Brighton. There's several jurisdictions that will be involved, but as far as the contract goes, that, that contract will be let by RTD. So I think that it's important that if you feel this strongly about this company, that you should talk to the RTD representatives, because talking to us, we may be beneficiaries of the line, but the actual line will go through RTD. Mr. Attorney, do you see anything different than, than that, as far as my comments?
No, you're exactly right. RTD will let the contract, and Commerce City will not have any authority in letting that contract.
Right, we will be beneficiaries for the one station that is in Commerce City. I think there are several stations in Thornton, and I, and I know there's one further up north that Adams County will be a beneficiary of, but I think it's important, if you feel that strongly, that you should talk to the RTD Board of Directors rather than the particular cities, because they're the ones who have the actual say in who gets that contract.
Okay. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much for coming in this evening.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Benson?
Question for the gentleman?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Is anything that happened going to affect the structural stability of the rebar?
No. It's just a lot of worker abuse on the project. This company treats their workers pretty bad.
Is it a unionized company?
No, it's not a union.
Well, there you go.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, I'll call Ricky Martinez. Need to state your name and address, please.
My name's Ricky Martinez. I live at 7885 Lakewood, Colorado, and I'm here with, with supporting Luis Appalinar. That was our original speech that we had put together for you guys. And I also am a worker on strike for this company. I worked at this St. Joseph's project, but I sat back and I took in everything you had to say, and we really appreciate you for your time tonight and, and giving us that, that feedback.
Well, and I think it's important that folks that are in your position, you, you don't really know where to go to start, but if you come here, I want to have that dialogue to make sure that we can help direct you to the place where you're gonna get the, the efforts to pursue your injustice that you're bringing forward to us, and that is with RTD Board of Directors.
Yes, sir. And thank you very much for your feedback.
Thank you. Have a nice evening. I'll call up Mike Baker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I want to thank you all for taking time to listen to my concerns regarding chip seal in my neighborhood. I live at 17463 East 98th Way in Commerce City. It's the Reunion Metro District. We have a, a, there's plans on the books to begin the chip seal process in my neighborhood starting on July 8th. I'm here to petition you all to at least slow this down a little bit and allow our community time to voice their opinions. Just in a short little bit of research that I did this afternoon, I, I've lived through the chip seal program before. I used to live in, in another community that had this done. It's messy, it's, it promotes windshield breakage, the, the chips that they, they're loose, so they come up, and they chip paint. It makes it rough for the kids to play on the streets. It is dangerous for motorcyclists because it's loose gravel on the roads. It's messy in that, as the chip seal is heel, is, is sealing, it, it, before it's completely cured, it just goes everywhere. You get, end up with it in your house, in your carpets. It's dangerous in multiple fashions, and I've got just a few here. Not only to damage the vehicles, and it's dangerous for motorcyclists and bicyclists, there's increased tire wear. Yes, it's a great program, except that, you know, of course, it's, because it's a little more aggressive than just standard asphalt, it also promotes wear on, on vehicle tires. And our children, as they're out there playing on this chip seal, even before it's completely sealed, that if they were to fall on this rock, it really does tear up their skin, skin quite badly. My son was out on it with his skateboard not too long ago, and when he fell down, I mean, it was a very large deal. We had to, we had to gauze him up pretty good to, to get the bleeding to stop. Rollerblading, you can't rollerblade. Any kind of activities on it is very much more difficult. Also, if you've got an elderly person that comes to visit you and they decide, they've got a walker, it's very difficult for them to push their walker along on this surface because it's so jagged and so uneven that it, it just promotes difficulty getting along. So I'd like to propose that we at least put a pause button on this so that we have an opportunity to react to this.
Well, I'm glad you came in this evening, and, and trust me, I've been in dialogue with the city manager, matter of fact, late this afternoon, just before we started our meeting. I know I have several council members that have some concerns regarding chip seal, and I, I think it's important that this is a good time for me to explain where I'm at with it. Back in the early eighties, 83, I believe, is when we started our chip seal program. Every road in Commerce City has been chip sealed after so many years of being put in. The benefits of chip sealing are that it extends the life of the road 20 to 30 years. It seals it from the UV light for oxidation purposes. It provides another surface for traction and, and things in the wintertime. It's, it's good for the city from the aspect that it saves on taxpayer dollars on replacement of roads, and we get a little more miles out of those roads than, than we would if we didn't seal them. The concern, and when I was a kid growing up in this community, when they came and chip sealed my road, I thought it was terrible. I couldn't ride my skateboard anymore. I know as a kid, that's one of the things that you liked to do, was go out on that nice smooth surface, ride your skateboard. The downside of that is I don't think we want kids in the road playing either, so there's, there's a trade-off. Not that they're not gonna do it, but there's a trade-off. I am concerned because there is getting to be more and more concerns brought forward about the chip seal program. Now, once the chip seal's done and it's cured, I, I think that you eliminate the, the tracking it into your house and everything else.
Not entirely.
Well, I, I live in an area that was just, just chip sealed, I don't know, JD what, about two years ago? And so we had to put up with that as well, and I know every resident, over time, has had to put up with a chip seal in front of their house in, in Commerce City, because that's part of our pavement management system. Now, are we to a point where we need to look at other options for long-term pavement management? And one of the things that I had brought up to the city manager earlier today was, what if we chip seal the 24-foot width of the road where we actually have the vehicle traffic and just do the emulsified asphalt from that point to the curb, so we leave some space for bicycles, for, for, for skateboarding, some of that? Now, I know our assistant city manager said he has to check into it to see if that can even happen. But ultimately, what we're trying to do is get the most out of those roads for the cost to our resident, and so we want to make sure we have a good quality pavement management system. Is chip seal the right thing or not? I'm not sure. I don't know what the new technologies are. I will tell you, it's up to this council if they would like to postpone this contract. Now, postponing this contract could mean that we have to eliminate the contract and recontract it out, if that's what we want to do, which could be some cost to the city because it's supposed to happen in a week. And therefore, there's materials that already have been purchased and things of that nature that the council needs to take into, into, of course, their, their opinion of this. We're talking about both the north and southern portions of Reunion, which is a huge area, and if we don't postpone it, it gets chip sealed in a week. If we do postpone it, we don't know if that chip seal, if we continue forward with the chip seal program, if that would happen yet this year, or we would have to wait maybe a whole year. So I'm just trying to give you what we're deliberating about. I didn't have time before the meeting to talk to my council members, which we had intended to do, about where we go with chip sealing. So I think now is an appropriate time, while you're here, to hear from the council what their concerns are with chip sealing, whether we move forward with it or not. And I know we've been burdened with it in front of our own homes, so, so we're not trying to put something in front of your house that we wouldn't expect in front of ours.
I understand that completely, and I, just so you know, I come here not just representing myself this evening, I come representing several of my neighbors as well.
Sure.
So, and I have addresses and names if you'd like those, I won't bother you with them right this second.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think right now that's appropriate, necessary. We know that there are concerns. Mr. McAdonald lives in Reunion. Mr. Benson lives in Reunion, and so does the city manager. So, you know, there are all, there are people sitting up here that will be affected by this as well. So I think it's important at this time, since I've given you some of the background of why we do do it, and the fact that everybody's had to put up with it from the, so that we can benefit from the good side of chip seal, but is it something that we continue, should continue doing as pavement management? That's up to this council to decide if they want to postpone that or not. I don't speak for them, so I'm gonna allow them to speak for themselves. So I'm gonna start with Mr. Benson.
Thank you. And these questions aren't necessarily for Mr. Baker, although I might have some of you. Do we do this after a certain number of years has passed, or do we do it when the road looks like it needs it? Because I remember Greg Clements coming in a couple of years ago saying, "We're no longer gonna go with this, we're gonna do it every 15 years, we're only gonna do it when the roadway needs it." Is that still our policy?
My understanding is you do it after so many years, after the road is cured, but I'm gonna defer that question over here to Jim O'Brien.
I believe the goal of the program is to apply the chip seal before the road is starting to deteriorate. So it's part of a management program to better manage the pavement and extend the life before more significant work is required.
Well, can't you tell by looking at it when that time comes, rather than just do it automatically every six years or seven years? Because I, I remember hearing Greg Clements specifically saying, "We're switching from this older method of just doing it every 10 years or whatever. We're gonna take a look and see if it needs it before we spend the money to do it." Is that not the way we're doing it anymore?
We don't know the specific details of that pavement management program. We'd have to check with our public works folks and bring that information back to you.
Because I would think that for a person, if they knew what they were looking at, they could tell, okay, this, this pavement is right on the edge, and we're gonna need to chip seal it now or it's gonna get a lot worse, without having to go in and spend all the money necessary to do that remedial work on it. But anyway, it's just, it's just a matter of money, that's all it is. What, what do other jurisdictions do? Do they use chip seal?
A lot of jurisdictions do use chip seal. I would again defer to Jim. I know Broomfield uses it, North Glen uses it. Jim, do you want to speak about that, or Brian?
Well, I'm not sure we have a complete list of communities that use chip seal as a pavement management program. That's information we could certainly bring back to council. We, we do know that it's not an uncommon practice.
And what do the?
We also, we also understand the concerns of residents. It's not an ideal solution.
Well, for the, the cities that don't use chip seal, what do they do?
We don't, I, I don't think, Mr. Hazer, I know the answers to that question.
The alternatives that would be available?
There are, there are alternatives, and I'm sure Jim could probably speak to more of them than me, but you have overlay projects, you have emulsified asphalt seal coats that can be put on without chip. There are some alternatives, but I don't know, I know the life expectancy from chip seal is, if you just do the emulsified asphalt seal, seal coat, basically, is a five to 10-year beneficiary, your, your beneficiary, a five to 10-year extension of that roadway. Chip seal's 20 to 30. And I would imagine that above that is the overlay, which is a little more expensive, but they can come in, rotor mill two inches off, overlay the road with a, a two-inch new overlay lift of asphalt, which will give new life to that road as well. But then, when you're talking on the construction side, that's a, a major construction project in neighborhoods which is going to, you know, be more demanding on the neighborhood for the time the construction's going on, but at the end of the road, into the, into that effort, you end up with a smooth road surface like they have now. Jim, would you like to add to that, please?
No, I, I think that's a good spectrum. I mean, you've got an overlay, you've got the chip seal, you've got the rotor milling and a, and a full overlay, which does last a lot longer, and then there's full reconstruction when it's beyond repair. There's a good spectrum there.
Well, are these other methods a lot more expensive than the chip seal?
The overlay is gonna be more expensive, the seal coat is going to be less expensive, the chip seal is more than the, than the seal coat because you're adding the granite chip to provide a wear surface. So that's really kind of how they lay out. Jim?
How long does the overlay last as compared to the chip seal?
Jim, that's a question for you.
You're talking the, the rotor milling and overlay? It'd be longer than the 20 to 30 years for a chip seal.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your.
You can do a seal coat, like you seal coat a parking lot, just make it black again. That's gonna last maybe the five to 10-year window. The chip seal's gonna be in that 20 to 30-year window, and a rotor mill and overlay where you actually grind up the asphalt and do a new asphalt coat on top is gonna last longer than the chip seal will.
And how much more would that cost? As a percentage?
I don't have any idea, tonight.
I think that'd be a question to ask, because if there are alternatives that aren't messy, perhaps.
Mr. Benson? If I, if I may interject, not that I don't want you to have all this information, but here's, here's where I see this entire discussion going. If this council feels that it's necessary to postpone this contract, because the contract is only a week away from starting, matter of fact, they've already bagged up the chip and, and took their flyers and, and their little packets of chip to start it, started circulating the neighborhood that this is gonna happen, just give me one second, sir. Here's what I think needs to happen. If this is postponed, realize that there will be a cost to the city for postponing it, which, that's not the primary issue of postponing it. But I think if we postpone it, then we need to have a major study session that goes over all of these different things that you're talking about, what those costs are, what the benefits are, and that we look at redoing our policy on pavement management. So I guess what I'm asking the council for is not to get into the details of what's better, what's worse. Right now, we've got a contract that's pending to go into effect in, in one week to start chip sealing the roads in Reunion. If we want to change our policy or take a look at what is better or not better, end result is we may come back here and find out that overlaying's a better program. We may come back here and find out that chip seal's the program we need to stick with, but I'm asking the council, now's the time, to give me your comments on whether you want to postpone this contract or move forward with this contract, because it starts next Monday. So, give me your opinion on that.
I've gotta say, I don't have enough information right now to say, "Go ahead with it," or "Stop it." I just don't have, this is a new issue for me. I haven't gotten nearly the information that I'd like to have. I've been asking questions to get that information. I'm not ready to say, "No, don't do it," or "Go ahead with it."
Okay, so, well, if you have some more questions to, to settle your mind on whether it's to be postponed or to move forward, I think now's the time to finish your conversation with Jim. But I had other council members ask me to move this along to make sure that we're, we're going down the right road, and if this is gonna be a study session item and be postponed anyway, then that's the time for you to get that information. If you need that information... But I'm asking the council, now's the time, to give me your comments on whether you want to postpone this contract or move forward with this contract, because it starts next Monday. So, give me your opinion on that.
I've got to say, I don't have enough information right now to say, "Go ahead with it," or "Stop it." I just don't have, this is a new issue for me. I haven't gotten nearly the information that I'd like to have. I've been asking questions to get that information. I'm not ready to say, "No, don't do it," or "Go ahead with it."
Okay, so...
Because I just don't know.
Well, if you have some more questions to, to settle your mind on whether it's to be postponed or to move forward, I think now's the time to finish your conversation with Jim. But I had other council members ask me to move this along to make sure that we're, we're going down the right road. And if this is going to be a study session item and be postponed anyway, then that's the time for you to get that information. If you need that information to make a decision of whether you're willing to postpone it or not, then I want you to continue with your questions.
Well, what are the consequences of postponing, say, a week? So, we can get enough information.
The consequences of postponing it are that we would have to, initially, I would imagine, cover the materials that have been purchased. And we would have to schedule a study session to go over our pavement management goals and objectives, because this is a policy issue that we're discussing. The policy since 1983, I believe, has been chip seal the roads. And if we're going to, if we're going to postpone this, then we need to have a serious discussion about what's better, what's not better, and come back with recommendations on our pavement management system. So, if you have more questions to get you to that point, Jim's there and available.
Well, I don't think all the answers are available here. Like you said, I think it would take a study session. And I know we've had situations before where we've been told, "You've got to decide right now."
Well, you don't have to decide right now.
And I'm not, I'm not ready to do that, because I don't have enough information. I think I would have to recuse myself from the vote.
Okay, then let me move on to the, some more of the council. Mr. McAdonny.
Thank you. I was concerned that this was a two-way discussion. I do have enough information. I have enough conflicting information to suggest that we can't proceed with this project. And I understand that there may be a financial penalty for making that decision at this point. But I'm hearing a mayor tell me, and I appreciate and applaud your Public Works experience, that we have a 20 to 30-year lifecycle based on a chip seal. Every bit of information that I find, be it Montana DOT, CalDOT, US Forest Service, you name it, says, on average, five to seven years. Here is chip sealing and paved roads, Archuleta County. The life expectancy of chip seal is about seven years. Here's another one that says 10 to 12 years. Here's another one that says eight to 10 years. I haven't found a single reference in all of the research that I've done that puts anything in the 20 to 30-year range. Every single reference puts it in a range of five to 10 years on an average. If that's the case, then look at the alternatives, and what are the cost benefits of those alternatives? I've exchanged the mail earlier today with the city manager, the assistant city manager, and Mr. Sterling, and suggested that we need a comparison of the alternatives distilled for council to consume and for us to share with the public that outlines each possible avenue for pavement management. I've revisited our pavement management presentation that Mr. Clements presented that was mentioned earlier. It talks about the decision-making process behind how we approach those roads. And folks may remember that rather than just having a program by which we cycle through areas of the city and spend money, regardless of whether the road is in a position to need that work or not, we have a pavement management inventory that essentially inventories every lane mile in our community to tell us what condition that lane mile is in. And based on the score that that lane mile gets, it's determined that it either needs, it's a candidate for chip or other resurfacing, or a mill and overlay, or full reconstruction. And so, you might remember in our study sessions, we talked about wanting to keep our roads in that sort of middle tier of the, of the pavement management scale, so that we sustain them as long as possible. Makes great sense. The point is, aside from chip seal being messy and noisy and an annoyance, I don't know that it's the best solution, because I haven't had an opportunity to have an objective review of the alternatives to us. If it's, if it's simply a cost decision, chip costs X, and it's easy enough to say that that's going to give you X number of lane miles covered for, let's say, 10 years. Great. If the other solution might be a little bit more, what are the other soft costs or the other benefits that are not directly tied to that that may be worth it? You get a really beautiful, smooth surface. Maybe you actually get a longer life out of an alternative product that's reasonably more expensive. I don't know those answers. And so, I think it's important that we take a look at a policy that's been in place since 1983, and a technology that's evolved, yes, some, but not maybe as far as it could have since 1983, and look at, is it the best policy for our community? The other driver of my suggestion to delay this is that when I exchanged comments with our city engineer today, and I said, "We've certainly gotten a lot of comments about the chip seal in Reunion. Is this typical? Do we..." Because I don't remember getting comments when we did Frontier, when we did the other neighborhoods last year. But maybe they didn't call me, maybe they didn't contact us, but do we get comments? And the first thing he said is, "Every time we do this, we get a number of complaints." And so, that may be okay for a department to decide that those complaints are just part of the process. But I think we have, as a council, have to have an ear to the tracks and an ear to the community that says, "If this raises concern every time we do it, well, maybe we need to take pause at some point and think about, is it the right thing to do?" Just because it's what we've always done, doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. Or if we're getting complaints every time we do it, well, maybe we need to change how we talk about it, and how we message it, and how we explain it to our community before we announce a handful of days before we're going to do it, or that we're going to do it. And that it's, you know, kind of like mom and dad saying, "You're going to do it because it's the right thing to do, and because I told you so." I think we have to be more mature with our neighbors and our citizens than that. So, I think shame on us. If it costs us $100,000, I hate to say it, but it's a lesson that we need to think about, and we need to apply it all over in terms of our decision-making. You can't just do it that same way all the time, because we've always done it that way.
I wouldn't disagree with you, Mr. McAdonny. I think it's important to note that the information I was providing is not from my background in Public Works, but from the information that I got from our staff. So, those numbers were, were given to me. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, may I suggest...
Hang on a second, Mr. Benson. I will come back to you, but I have other council members that have lit up their lights to speak. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, the mayor didn't mention, but I do live up in that area as well. I had a question for Jim. In the gallery area, did they chip seal that? Or did they resurface it?
I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to look into that.
Okay.
Where?
Over in the gallery area. I was told that they...
By the Prater Homes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what they did on that.
If that was, if that was chip sealed, or if that was overlay. I know by, you know, because last weekend, of course, we did receive this chip sealed bag at our study session, and it's, you know, we pretty much took the information, really couldn't weigh in on it, because it's, that's not the type of meeting that we could discuss until, until today. And then seeing the comments that were brought to us by email. I have concerns of it as well. I mean, the cost of chip seal is one-fourth to one-fifth of conventional asphalt. And I don't want to, you know, because we're the people who, who watch Monday meetings and can understand that this could be Frontier, it could be Turnberry, and if the same issue came up, I would like to take the same amount of time to find out if this is the proper thing for any of our streets within the city. Because I know that some of these streets within large communities haven't even been driven on. Some of the homes are just empty lots there. So, are we, I would like to know what the maintenance is. Are we just doing roads that are just existing, whether people drive them or not? Would be nice to know. Maybe we, we need to look at best practice to make sure that what we're doing today is the right thing. And to have us on a study session for everybody to weigh in, to understand, that's one thing is, being on council is, there's a lot of things that make up the everyday business here, here in our city. And I tell you right now, I don't know everything, but when things happen, I would like to know the ins and outs to make sure going forward, if this is the best thing for our city. Doesn't matter what street it's on, if it's in the, if it's in the core city or, or the north, sooner or later. Because I know when you do, do projects, for every dollar you spend, for every $1 you spend to keep up with maintenance all, when you don't do those maintenance, it could cost you $6 to $8 instead of a dollar. So, I suggest that we do put this on a study session. I'm sure it won't take that long to, to dive into this. But at least everyone will be understanding going forward, what's going to be the best, be the best method for our in-between maintenance. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Amador.
Working in construction and understanding the benefits of maintenance and non-maintenance. And also, with this particular item, chip seal, there has been chip seal in front of my house. I'm not a fan of it at all, so I do hear your concerns. At some point, the maintenance does have to happen. And so, when I look at a road, or a building, or anything, I look at the extended or maybe the expected service life of, we'll just take the road, for instance. If we can go ahead and extend that service life at a minimal cost today, we know that construction costs are going up, we know that the economy's turning around, there's a lot of other factors going on around us. And just to take this full circle, do we postpone or do we not postpone the contract at this point? I know there's been a lot of time and energy put into this point already. I am not a fan of impeding a construction schedule, especially knowing that material has been procured, and what do you do with that, and how do you do that? I think chip, I think us as a council definitely need to reevaluate what our typical policy and practice is on maintenance of roads, but I don't think today is the answer to stop a construction project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Benson?
You know, I've just thought about all the complaints that I've heard about this, and it seems like chip seal is entirely suitable for rural roads and industrial areas. And it might have been okay in 1983 in Commerce City, when we only had about 15,000 population, and rural roads and industrial areas might have been the majority of what we were looking at here. But this has changed completely at this point in time. And I would agree with, I agree with Mr. McAdonny, I agree with Mr. Douglas. We need to have a study session to go over all this. I would just like to have all the facts, because I'm not hearing anything that convinces me that the chip seal is the best way to go here, by a long shot. I'm not...
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
After listening to all the discussion, I am never a fan of throwing away money. Never, ever. But at this present time, I think as a council, we should just consider the fact that we need to postpone this right now and do an in-depth study, because 1983 was a long time ago to be doing it the same way, just because that's the way we used to do it. I, I don't know what the cost is going to be for us to either postpone or withdraw from this contract, and I don't even want to ask. But at this present time, if, like it was stated, if every time they do chip seal, we have nothing but complaints, maybe it's time that we start looking at other methods of sealing our roads that will be more beneficial to our community that does pay for our roads.
Councilwoman Carson?
I went brain-dead for a minute. Mr. McBroom, is there any way you can speculate what the cost of this is if we delayed this?
I understand and appreciate the concerns and questions. I think a study session's a good idea. We don't know what that cost would be to either postpone or cancel that contract. We think it's, we're guessing it's in the tens of thousands, maybe over $100,000, but to be honest, we don't, we don't know.
Well, after listening to discussions and, and listening to your concerns, it was probably 20 years ago, when I lived in unincorporated Adams County, that the road in front of me was chip sealed. And our kids were all bicycle riders and young playing in the street. And if they did wreck on that, it was havoc on their skin. We did drag some of those little rocks into the house, because it sticks to your shoes. And, and as the mayor said, the street I live on now was probably two or three years ago. I don't disagree with my fellow council members that we probably need to take a very in-depth look at this through study session and really see whether it is a policy we want to continue, whether it was something from 1983, as Mr. Benson said, that no longer fits our city. But I can't say that, and, and I'm really sorry, that it's imminent that we stop it today at the cost of, I don't know what, because nobody can tell me whether it's going to cost this city $50,000, $100,000. And it is a practice that's been going on in this city since 1983, which, and I do believe that we have gotten a lot of complaints, because probably there's not a council member setting up here that wants their street chip sealed either. But, so on making these rash decisions tonight, when this is something that's been going on in our city for, since 1983, and these complaints have been coming in, not that I'm not listening to you, it's just that I also have to make decisions of, how is it best that we proceed? And, and I do thank you, because I do think, no matter what the vote is tonight, this council is going to take a look at whether this is something that we want to continue doing in the city. But I just don't think that I can support tonight of saying, "It needs to be postponed until this council has figured out what it is that we're going to go forward with." So, I, I do apologize that I know I'm not giving you the answer that you wanted to hear. I very much appreciate you taking the time and the effort. When you did that, I thought, boy, I wish everybody on my block would have came in here and complained when it was getting ready to happen on my street, because I don't like it. But I just can't, knowing that we've been doing it for 30 years, and that we're going to make a rash decision tonight to stop it, I'm, I'm not sure that's the best way to go.
Mr. Teter?
I'm going to go along with J.D. and Amador on this issue. I believe chip sealing has worked for a long time in Commerce City. It may not be the best there is at this point in time today, but I will still be voting to continue it. Thank you.
Okay. The only one I haven't heard from is Councilwoman Elliott. Do you have a comment you want to share with us, please?
I do. So, after listening to different discussions, you know, I sit here and I look at this little bag with the samples here at, at my seat, and I just can't convince myself that this is the route that we should continually, continually take. However, with Ms. Carson's description of not making a rash decision tonight, I guess I want to know, why, why didn't we have something sooner that we could have discussed and been in maybe better preparations to, to see what other alternatives there were? In fact, does this company do any other types of pavement resurfacing, or is this just their, their specialty? This is just the one that they promote the most? I mean, I guess it's a matter of if we're trying to look at postponing or, or, you know, just canceling our contract altogether, we should really look at what other, what other alternatives that we have, and what other services that they have to offer.
In response to Ms. Elliott's questions, I believe the contractor that's been hired for this project specializes in chip sealing. We could certainly check to see if, if they have capabilities to do other types of work on roads. We began hearing about concerns in Reunion over the weekend. Chip sealing, as was mentioned, has been a pavement management technique in the city for quite some time. We recall that it was part of the discussion, as was mentioned by staff when we talked about the pavement management program at budget time last year, but that was separate from understanding individual concerns about chip sealing. As was mentioned, it's certainly not an ideal solution, but it's one that's, that has had some benefits in the community for quite some time. A study session to look at alternatives, under the circumstances, sounds like an excellent idea. The challenge tonight is just what you're discussing. Would you like to have us postpone the project or not? If we do postpone it, we know there will be some cost, but we don't know how much that is. If it's just postponed and we can reschedule the work, the cost may be minimal. If we, if we postpone and aren't able to reschedule, there may, there may be a higher cost.
Okay. I have several people continuing to want to speak. I'm going to, I'm going to call on you. Keep it, please keep it brief. I would like to finish this, this discussion up. Mr. Douglas?
Just knowing that, you know, from our discussion here, do you have any information? How many, how many lane miles between the neighborhoods is this, this chip seal project going to cover?
No, it's, it's our understanding from Public Works that all of the streets in Reunion and... Reunion and Buffalo Mesa were proposed as part of this contract that's valued at about $1 million.
$1 million.
And yesterday's time is, what, about a week or 10 days to complete the work? Two weeks, starting next Monday.
Now, is that something we also would use on Chambers and any other major thoroughways that are non-concrete roads?
I don't know the answer to that. We're thinking it's been a pavement management technique used on local streets rather than major thoroughfares.
Okay. And as far as this project, when you say $1 million, what, where are we at as far as on that contract? Are we halfway through? Are we at the tail end of it? Or are they just getting started?
The work is, the work is scheduled to begin next Monday. We're not sure what expenses the contractors incurred to this point.
Right. I mean, overall, the other neighborhoods that are already done, this is, this is one neighborhood that they were, we're getting to next. Is that, is that correct?
This year, the budget was $1 million, and it was Reunion and Buffalo Mesa. It's my understanding Frontiera was done last summer, River Run two summers ago.
Okay, I see.
So this year, the entire $1 million budget was being spent in Reunion and Buffalo Mesa.
All right. Thanks for information.
Mr. Benson.
Well, how long would it take to schedule a study session, and how long would that study session last on this particular topic for the presentation about all the alternatives?
Those are, those are both very good questions. Because we're just entering a budget time for us for the 2014 budget, we've started to, to plan the regular meetings and the study sessions over the next four to six weeks to present budget information to council for the 2014 budget. Doesn't mean we couldn't jockey some things around. Our preference would be to have a study session in the fall after the city council's budget retreat. It's not to say it couldn't happen sooner. How much time would it take at a study session would mostly be up to city council. It would might take us 15 or 20 minutes to present the research that we've, that we've assembled for you, and then it would just be a matter of how much time council decided to discuss the matter.
Well, it seems to me like we ought to be able to schedule some kind of a study session before next Monday to get this thing resolved, either yes or no. I mean, I, it might only take an hour. I've certainly got an hour between now and next, next Monday. Two hours, whatever it takes. This is a, I think it's a major issue to a lot of our people, especially the people who are going to have it put in front of their house, which includes me, of course, so.
You're not on a walk, are you?
I'm going to be on a walker sooner than you think. I don't know. But I, we just need to get this done now so we don't have to delay the contract for no reason. There are probably some penalty clauses. I don't know. I think we've already bought the materials. Those materials probably have value. They could be sold to somebody else, but I'd just take the go-ahead with something like this, given all the issues that have been raised here tonight, issues that I really didn't know about. But like I said, this, this is something, I don't understand why it's not being used on a road like Chambers. I would think that would be the kind of road where you would want to use it because it's more for a, kind of a rural street or an industrial area. I would think those, where you're not going to have people really riding their bikes in neighborhoods and everything. I don't know why it wouldn't be used for those areas, but I think we ought to have a study session before next Monday, myself.
If I may interject before I continue, from the looks of it, I could very well be the swing vote on the discussion that is at hand. Not that I don't agree with J.D. or Andrew or, or Steve or Jason or anybody else up here. I think that we've been doing this since 1983. I think that we have $1 million to spend that we have budgeted for this. I think that that money needs to be spent appropriately for the best practices that are out there. And right now, I am not satisfied that chip seal is the best practice out there. So I would rather save that $1 million and use it towards the best practice. If that is chip sealed, then we'll use it towards that. But I think we have to have that discussion before we potentially put another $1 million into chip seal. One second, Bob. So with that, with that said, what my concerns are, that we do something by allowing this contract to continue forward on Monday, we put another $1 million into chip seal, then we have the discussion, we're another $1 million behind the eight ball if we change our mind and there are new technologies or better practices out there. I would rather be safe than sorry that we are applying the maintenance to our roads in the best positive manner for our residents that we can. So therefore, I think, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Benson. Let's have a study session before Monday, but if we wait, if we wait between now and Monday to have another two-hour meeting, that's more time that goes by that these contractors are out there passing out chip seal bags, that they're out there continuing to add more money to what we would have to pay, whether or not we continue forward with chip seal, I am hesitant to not make, I'm hesitant to not go down that road and to make a decision tonight to either postpone and get all of the information on all of the technologies that are out there so that we can best, cost-wise, efficiency-wise, and product-wise, maintain our roads. So therefore, I will be supporting postponement of the contract until we have all of the information for the betterment of the application of the $1 million. Because if this is not the proper new technology to be using and there's a better alternative, then I think we need to know what that alternative is before we spend the $1 million. Not that I don't agree. I don't want to cancel the contract and, and take a small loss, but I'm more hesitant to not cancel the contract and take a big loss, if that makes sense to everybody. So now you know where I stand. I have a few more people that would like to engage, but I've, I've made my position known. Mr. McElhany.
I was prepared to make a motion to recommend that council vote to suspend or pause the current agreement to enable staff to explore alternatives to the traditional chip seal that was intended to be used on the projects that are currently scheduled, to enable them to come back and provide a report to staff, or to, from staff to council on alternatives to the mayor's point.
I appreciate that. There is a motion on the floor. However, I'm going to continue with discussion because I still have a lot of lights lit up here. Councilwoman Carson.
Thank you for continuing with discussion. I actually agree with everything that was set up here. Mr. McElhany, you started with not enough information. That's exactly where I'm at. I would like to see this council say, such as Mr. Benson did, that we will reconvene this week to get the information so all of us know what it is we're really looking at if we cancel this, this contract. I can't set up here and, and say I want to cancel this contract. This contract may have a clause in it that says it's going to cost us a half a million dollars. I mean, if this is a million-dollar project, this is a company that this has been planned as a big project, and I don't know what that contract says. I cannot vote to suspend a contract when I don't know what the consequences are. I have no problem with coming back to this council, learning what that contract says so that then I can make a vote whether we're going to postpone it or not, but without knowing that, I'm a, I don't want to vote. I don't want to cost the citizens, if it's a million dollars, if we lose it all by, by canceling, I don't want to take that liability on myself. So I would ask this council to come forward with a, a special session, an emergency session, if staff, I'm sure they can get the contract, Mr. Gaylor can, and present it to us.
Let me say something. Yes, Mr. Gaylor, go ahead.
Well, I, I fully agree that time is really of the essence. What hasn't been said is that, pretty obvious, we have a contractor who has time set aside to start a contract in one week, a million-dollar job. So we postpone it. What we're incurring is not only costs of materials if they can't be used on this project. He can possibly use them on another project and mitigate our damages there, but I think more importantly is his downtime. If he's out there looking for another job because he lost this contract next week, we're liable for that downtime that he incurs, and if he doesn't get another job to replace this one for three weeks, four weeks, whatever, we're incurring all of his lost profits during that downtime. So it certainly is important that time is of the essence. Continuing it till September or so, we're asking for a big, a big risk. But if we're talking about a very short continuance to discuss this, hopefully before the contract is let or begins, that's certainly a safer way to go because we're incurring damages if we postpone it and he doesn't have any work to replace us.
Mr. Benson.
Well, I was just going to ask to amend Mr. McElhany's motion to say that all the consequences to the city be taken into account based on the contract and let us know what that is, and if the consequences are too severe, maybe we don't vote to postpone it. But we don't know that. Again, it's a lack of information right now. I don't know what that contract says. I would think that maybe you could send a copy to all of us. That could happen almost immediately so we can see if there's any kind of, what their damages would be, Mr. Gaylor. Maybe you could analyze that and tell us what their damages would be if, and I certainly think that if we do something like this and it costs a contractor some money, then we ought to pay whatever those damages are. He's got people to pay on his staff, and, but they just, they just need, we don't have enough information right now. That's the whole point. We need to have this study session, get it over with, and then we, we can make a decision. But I think we ought to let the contractor perhaps know at this point what these discussions are and that something might happen to delay the contract. Would you agree to that motion, Jason?
I would, I would accept the amendment to the motion. I would caveat it to say that if at all possible, that we would reconvene as soon, as soon as tomorrow if staff were able to come up with sufficient input.
Two, um, two comments. One, we would want to make sure we had all the information that would be useful to you. We'll certainly do the best we can if you scheduled a meeting tomorrow night. It's my understanding from Mr. Gaylor that you could set a special meeting for tomorrow, but it would need to be 24 hours in advance, so the earliest you could meet would be roughly 8:00 tomorrow evening. I think you'd want to set it up as a special meeting so that you could take action should you want to. You could schedule a study session in less time, but then you wouldn't be able to take any action.
I would, I would recommend that if we move forward with an additional meeting, that we do it as a special meeting. We have all the background information available. I'd want to make sure we had all of our public works staff here, and I, I would need to know exactly what that number that we potentially could lose because I'm, I was considering the rounded number of $100,000 potential. If that number is escalating, then, and we're going to take a big loss on, on the $1 million worth of benefit, then I would be hesitant to not go ahead with, with the contract and get the benefit out of the chip seal. I don't want to lose both ways, if that makes sense. So I need more information now, too, after hearing from the city attorney, because if that number's escalating and we, we can lose half of that, that money that was appropriated and we budgeted for chip seal at our, our budget meeting, then I'm not willing to take that kind of loss. I'd rather take the benefit in the, in the maintenance program, hesitant, though, because I don't want to impact our residents in a negative manner. So it's, it's a, it's a tough decision sitting up here. You don't want to, you don't want to waste, waste the taxpayers' money, but you don't, you want to make sure they get the best quality benefit for their money, too. So that's, that's what the struggle is. I'm going to finish out with the last two people that have lit up their lights, and then we'll go forward with the motion. I've got Mr. Bullock.
Okay. I have a two-part question because I really need to hear the motion again, and with what the mayor just said and with what the city attorney said, that's a position changer because if we have to pay for this gentleman being downtime and we might lose a whole million dollars just for him not being able to work, that would be a total budget changer, I would think, for this whole council because if we didn't get the chip seal plus we paid for not doing nothing, we have taken the taxpayers' money and we've done the worst thing possible with it. So what was the actual motion and amendment to the motion?
Mr. Gaylor, can you reiterate the, the motion, please?
Maybe it's going to take Mr. McElhany and Mr. Benson.
I can paraphrase, and then you can decide if that's accurate or not. I have council members McElhany and Benson moved and seconded to postpone the start of the chip seal contract and hold a study session on the pavement management program.
I don't, I don't think it was seconded. He made an amendment to it, but that.
Right. He seconded and amended.
Oh, okay.
I don't think that's exactly what, because.
Now, let me get this straight. You amended Mr. McElhany's motion, but I did not hear a second.
I didn't either.
That's what I got out of it. Mr. McElhany made a motion, you amended it, there's been no second.
That's correct. Okay.
And I, and I think the, we want to, we want to delay this until we can have a study session, and hopefully that can occur tomorrow night and we'll be ready, we'll be ready to go.
What?
We would have to have a special meeting.
Call a special meeting.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, may I substitute my motion?
Okay. Now I have Mr. McElhany. Go ahead.
I would offer to replace, what would be the proper procedure here? Is it to submit a substitute motion? Or withdraw my motion and submit an alternative, right? So I would, I would withdraw my motion.
And the second first?
It lacks a second, correct?
Right.
And I would submit as a replacement motion that we postpone a decision on the pavement management discussion this evening, that we request a special meeting be scheduled for tomorrow evening for starting at 8:03 PM to allow for the 24 hours notice, and that at said meeting, staff provide us, to the extent possible, a summary of alternatives to chip seal, cost and benefit, and implications of a further postponement beyond tomorrow night of the planned million-dollar program.
And the consequences.
To determine, so that council can ultimately take a vote tomorrow about whether or not to proceed with the plan or pursue an alternative pavement management plan with the $1 million plan for 2013 pavement management. Does that work?
Sounds good to me. Mr. Douglas.
No, I thought it was, the budget was $1 million for pavement management, not $1 million budget for this project.
We, we expanded the, we expanded the chip seal program not too long ago. Brian, I'll let you handle that.
It's my understanding that the $1 million budgeted for pavement management in the 2013 budget is being dedicated to this project.
Okay.
We can confirm that certainly between now and the special meeting tomorrow meeting, tomorrow evening.
And we, we did take, there was so much budgeted, then we took and added some, if you will all recall. So now, right, we doubled it from half a million to a million. That's why this would cover both sides of 104th for Reunion and not just the north side.
Okay. Thank you for clarification.
Okay. Councilwoman Elliott.
Okay. So I actually pulled up their website just to see what other services that they offer, and it looks like they have eight other options. And so what I'd like to say is maybe while staff does the research for those options, maybe, maybe use some language that would include more of on a positive note, not necessarily canceling or postponing, but you know what? This is what was brought to us. I think these are other alternatives that we might consider. What would the cost differential be with these eight different services? Nine, including the chip seal, but I think that's something that should be, you know, inserted somewhere.
I know. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Benson.
We need to vote on calling this special meeting or we're going to be 8:30 or 9:00 before we get that vote made, so.
We need to second it first.
I'll second.
Okay. Now I have a motion and a second. I have two other people that have something to say. Councilwoman Carson.
I was just going to ask Mr. McElhany if he'd be interested in changing his motion, but it's a little late now, so.
Okay. Mr. Bullock, you had something?
Took, turned, I was going to second the motion so we could get the vote before 8:03.
Now, we're all good. Nobody's got any more comments. I have a motion and a second to call a special meeting of the city council for tomorrow, 24 hours from today, which will probably be closer to 11, or to 8:30. All those in favor?
That motion to be read again so I know exactly.
Eight works?
Eight, yeah, because it's not eight yet.
Eight works. Bob, I have a request for the motion to be read.
Motion is been made by Councilman McElhany, seconded by Councilman Benson, to convene a special meeting of this city council for July 2nd to commence at 8:00 PM for the purpose of receiving information and making a decision regarding the use of chip seal on the reunion pavement project.
Okay.
Does that also include bringing us all information of the consequences of changing the contract?
Yes. Okay. Is everybody satisfied with the motion and the second? I'll call for a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion is carried. We'll have a special meeting tomorrow night to discuss what the implications of not moving forward with the project and what the benefits of looking at new alternatives will be.
Can I ask you a question?
I want to thank Mr. Baker for coming in this evening. And now you're aware tomorrow night there'll be a meeting. You're more than welcome to be there to listen to the discussion.
I will be listed. A lot of my neighbors may be listening.
Good. Well, I think it's important that everybody in the neighborhood understand the position we're in because we're so close to this contract being let and we are underneath of the umbrella of having to still pay for damages to this contractor if we don't move forward. But we all want the best, what's the best for our community. And so I think that the end result is that we're going to try to get to that tomorrow night. And it's all going to be based on how much money could we lose by not moving forward versus how much we're going to be able to apply to whatever the best product is going to be to the road.
I guess my concern is also this, that there is something that's been on the books for so long, and we're a fairly new community. The decision was made without touching bases with any of us. No one knew up there that this was going through. It might be a policy change that you all might investigate to go to those communities and say, "Look, we're having a meeting discussing road maintenance. Please attend." At least give us the opportunity to come in and voice our opinions about what is being done.
And I appreciate you coming in, and this has been standard procedure for 30 years. So nobody was intentionally left out. It's just how we've managed our roads over the past 30 years. And tomorrow night, we're going to investigate it further. But right now, my concerns are going to be what are the potential losses if we don't move forward with the contract? Thank you again for coming in this evening.
Very much so.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll move on with the agenda. That concludes our citizen communication portion of the meeting. We get into approval of the minutes, what are the council's desires. Mr. McElhany?
Would move to approve the minutes of June 3rd, 2013.
Before we go to that, can I get a motion to allow Councilman Benson to abstain from voting? Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve Councilman Benson to abstain from voting on the minutes of June 3rd.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to allow Mr. Benson to abstain from voting on the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Oppose? Nobody? All right. All right. Mr. McElhany, go ahead with your motion on the...
I'll second it. I second his motion.
All right. So now I have a motion and a second on the June 3rd, 2013 minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion is carried. Now we'll move into the consent agenda. There are six items on the consent agenda this evening. Any council member may ask to have an item removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and vote. This request does not require a motion and/or a vote. Does any member of this council wish to remove an item? Seeing no one.
My button's pushed.
Oh, there... I got four or five up here, J.D. That's why I look down, just to make sure. Councilwoman Carson?
I'd like to remove ordinance 1959 for discussion.
Hang on one second. Animal control agents? All right. We will pull ordinance 1959 and hear it during the ordinance portion of our meeting. I need the city attorney to make sure that I don't pass that by. Anyone else have any issues with the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, lacking 1959. Mr. McElhany?
Move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of ordinance 1959.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Attorney, please read the consent agenda and please leave 1959 out of it.
All right. The first item is Resolution 2013-38, resolution appointing a member to designated board and commission of Commerce City. Ordinance 1956, an ordinance amending table 5-1 of the Land Development Code to allow limited equipment rental as a use by permit in C-3 zone districts. Ordinance 1963, an ordinance renumbering certain wards established, and ordinance 1955. Ordinance Z-905-13, an ordinance rezoning from Adco C-3 to Commerce City C-3 Zone District. The property described in Exhibit A attached here to made apart hereof located at 6771 East 80th Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the City of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning. Title of ordinance... let's see. Is that the...
AN 230-13, Bob.
AN 230-13. An ordinance approving and accomplishing the annexation of contiguous unincorporated territory described in Exhibit A attached here to made apart hereof located at 6771 East 80th Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado.
Thank you.
That's the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second, and the title has been read. I'll call for a roll call vote. Let the record show that the consent agenda has been approved unanimously, and we'll move on into the public hearing portion.
Why might we have to do this, 1959?
1959. I was putting that at the beginning of ordinances on first reading. Bob, where's the appropriate place? Should we handle it now?
Yes. That'd be preferable since it was on the consent agenda. You removed it, so it'd be the first item.
It's fine with me. Can we have the staff give a small presentation on ordinance 1959 for background? Is that what you need?
No. I had a concern with it that if you want me just to go into why I pulled it and what my concern was.
Would you please?
It is Section 3, Paragraph 1 stating that if any animal has been impounded upon suspicion of being a pit bull or vicious, dangerous animal, the owner of such animal may know later than seven days after impoundment file for a written petition. If that doesn't happen, then it states that the... let's see here. Where no written request is received by the municipal court within seven days after impoundment, the animal shall be considered abandoned and placed for adoption are dispatched or disposed. Can we change that language either to make that a little longer or that if the animal's in care of a neighbor or somebody because they're... you're out of town and your neighbor's watching your animal, that they could put in the written request or else that if you're notified that... and one of the things that came to my mind is just recently, one of our neighbors was babysitting another neighbor's dog because that neighbor was on a cruise. And for the most part, you can't reach somebody on a cruise boat. And I would hate for somebody to come home after a week cruise and the neighbor who was babysitting the dog was not able to do anything because the language in here actually states the owner has to file for that. So, I mean, can we just clean that language up a little?
So would lengthening it from seven days to some longer period of time address your concern?
Either lengthening it or saying that whoever the dog has been left in care of, they could file if the owner is not around, the custodian. But I don't know. If you use those words, do they have to have a legal paper saying? I mean, I don't know.
We think there's a way to modify that language, owner or owner's representative.
Okay.
We think would be acceptable. Do you have... with 10 days, increasing it from seven to 10?
No. Because a lot of cruises are 14 days, and some people are 14 and put one or two days on the end of each cruise or the beginning. They might be gone for up to three weeks. If it's a really nice vacation in the summer or some people go and tour Europe, yeah, but don't try and do it on a cruise.
How about owner's representative?
That would work. Because if you're the caretaker and you're watching the dog, you could easily... if you let the dog out, you could file.
Seven. So we'll insert owner or owner's representative.
May I ask you, Mr. Gaylor? Since this was approved on first reading, is that a... would you consider that a substantial change?
No, it would not be changed in the material portion of the ordinance. The ordinance...
I didn't think so. I just wanted to clarify before we voted on this, make sure that we didn't have to go back to first reading.
So just to clarify, if we add owner or owner's representative, no need to change the seven days? Then we wouldn't see a need to change the seven days, but it's certainly up to council.
Okay. Hopefully, that takes care of your concern, and we'll see what the council has to say about it. Mr. McElhany?
And if it's not already been moved, I would move to adopt the ordinance with the modification suggested by Councilmember Carson.
Okay. Do I have a second, Mr. Bullock?
Second that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1959 on second reading with the changes of allowing the caretaker of the dog to also have the ability to file. With that said, I'll ask for a vote... a roll call vote.
Title?
Yep. Yes, please.
Title reads, "An Ordinance Amending Various Sections of Chapter 4 of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code Regarding Interference with Animal Control Agents' Right to Hearing for Suspected Vicious or Dangerous Animals and Prohibited and Regulated Animals."
Thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote now. Let the record show that the ordinance has been adopted unanimously by the council tonight on second reading. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. We have the 2013 JAG Formula Grant. This public hearing is a requirement of this particular grant application and allows the community to provide input on how the grant dollars should be spent. I'll now open the public hearing and ask if anyone in the audience would like to address the council at this time. Anyone in the audience? Seeing no one, does council have any questions or concerns? Mr. Bullock, your lights lit? Was that from before?
That's from before. Sorry.
Okay. All right. Then I'll close the public hearing if there's no one in the audience that wants to come up and testify. The public hearing is now closed. I'll ask for a motion to approve moving forward with the grant application, and I have Mr. McElhany?
Would move that we approve 13-198, 2013 JAG Formula Public Hearing... or Public Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock.
Second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve moving forward with the application for the 2013 JAG Formula Grant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion is carried. Next, we have a resolution, Resolution 2013-40. Does council have any questions regarding this resolution? Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve ordinance...
Resolution.
Resolution 2013-40.
Thank you. Mr. McElhany?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council regarding this resolution? Seeing no one, I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the title?
Title reads, "Resolution Clarifying and Affirming Effective Date of Recording of Ordinance AN 219-07 and Ordinance AN 220-07, Number 2013-40."
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion is carried. Resolution is passed. Now we go to ordinances on first reading. Does the council have any questions regarding ordinance 1965? Is there anyone in the audience who has... would like to address the council regarding this ordinance? Seeing no one, I'll ask for a motion. Mr. McElhany?
Sorry, I talked off my page. I would move to approve ordinance 1965, amending the 2013 budget of the city.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Will the city attorney read the title?
Title reads, "An Ordinance Amending the 2013 Budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the Recognition of the Xcel Energy Foundation/CTC/Colorado Tree Coalition Grant in the Amount of $6,000 for Tree Replacement and the Authorization of the Expenditure Thereof."
Thank you. Mr. Douglas, did you have a comment?
No. 1966.
No problem. I'll ask for a roll call vote at this time.
Third time's a charm.
Let the record show that the ordinance is introduced on first reading with a unanimous decision by the council. And we move on to ordinance 1966. Does council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I do. On this general improvement district, residential area general improvement district, my... reading this, it's that little yellow area on the map, correct? Is that right?
This is the GID for Tower Road, commercial development only, correct?
This is the residential area GID that would be the complement to the commercial area GID that's already been created. And Mr. Tinklinberg thankfully is here to answer questions.
Why don't you go ahead, Mr. Tinklinberg?
The initial property being used to form the district is a very small parcel. So it's that tiny parcel that's shown on the map. And then the larger area is the inclusion area, which is the same inclusion area as for the commercial area, general improvement district. So the ECA GID. So those two inclusion areas overlap each other, but each district will be adjoining each other. In other words, it'll be like checkered board pattern where there's residential property, it'll be the ERA GID. Where there's commercial property, it'll be the ECA GID.
Okay. Because I know on that map, on the comprehensive map, it showed which areas were going to be residential, and buffering the DIA, there wasn't going to be any residential built in that area there. So this right doesn't distinguish that. It just kind of gives, you know... and the whole thing could be residential. So, yeah.
These do not control how the land is developed. These are merely there as a tool, as a funding mechanism to fund the improvements, the public improvements that need to be built. How the land is developed is controlled by the zoning code and all of that type of thing that council has adopted previously.
All right. So based on the plan, what we have going forward, when this starts to... infrastructure and all, and designated areas will remain as their plan right now, correct? Okay. Thank you.
Yes. If I may, Steve. The noise contours won't allow us to develop residential in certain areas. The majority of what you see red on this map will not be residential. I know there are little pieces here and there that may be, and that would apply their GID money into the northern infrastructure GID to pay down the debt, correct?
These two GIDs will function independently of the northern infrastructure GID. However, as you've already seen with the northern infrastructure GID and the ECA GID, there is an intergovernmental agreement on funding for tower. We will see the same type of thing with the residential GID as well.
Okay. I think I got it. Did that answer your questions?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Did we already have a move?
No, we have not.
Okay. Move to approve ordinance 1966 on first reading?
65... no, 65. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address council regarding this ordinance? Seeing none? We have a motion and a second. I'll ask the city attorney to read the title.
Title reads, "An ordinance establishing and creating the Commerce City E four seventy Residential Area General Improvement District, making certain findings and determinations related thereto, and waiving all requirements for notice, publication, public hearing, and election as permitted by statute."
Thank you, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that the ordinance is introduced unanimously by the council this evening. We'll move on to ordinance nineteen sixty-seven for introduction. Does the council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Mr. McLeDany.
This is from previous.
Okay, Mr. Bullock.
Move to approve ordinance nineteen sixty-seven, or introduce ordinance nineteen sixty-seven?
Thank you, Mr. McLeDany.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the council regarding this ordinance? Seeing no one, I have a motion and a second. I'll ask the attorney to read the title.
Title reads, "An ordinance amending the two thousand and thirteen budget of the city of Commerce City, Colorado, by the recognition of the Colorado Department of Transportation Grant in the amount of three thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars for clicket or ticket efforts and the authorization of the expenditure thereof."
Thank you. It's, the title's been read, I'll ask for the vote. Roll call vote, please.
I've got all three of mine lit up, and it's not selecting just one. Is anyone else having an issue?
Mine was like that, I pushed it a couple times and it finally stayed on. We're waiting for Amador, yours is lit up on the board. There we go, how's that?
Interesting.
Let the record show that ordinance nineteen sixty-seven is introduced unanimously by the council this evening. Now we'll move into the presentation portion of our council meeting. The presentation tonight is going to be on the Mile High Greyhound Park update, and Jim's coming up to give that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm members of council. Got a brief presentation for you tonight on the Mile High Greyhound Park project update. It is in your packet as well as a council communication that details of some of the things we've been working on for the last several months. As you know, we've been providing updates every two or three months since the property purchase nearly two years ago now. The last formal update was in January, that included the feasibility study. We also had an executive session, if you recall, back in May regarding a potential prospect for the site. Staff also provided a brief summary throughout the last couple years of immediate projects, public outreach that we've undergone, as well as planning efforts. Give you an update of what's happened in the last few months. We did attend a public-private partnership conference in February, had an opportunity to present the project to over six hundred and fifty people in a formal presentation, along with several other cities around the country. Unfortunately, about ninety percent of the people in the room were service providers. I was able to make a few contacts with developers, but frankly, the trip was not as productive as we would have liked, but we did learn a lot about how other communities are doing these types of projects. In March, there was a federal funding decision on new market tax credits, and I won't get into the details of what those are here tonight, other than to say that no Colorado community development entities did receive an allocation. It's been several years since Colorado's received any allocation, but we do have a small program we're looking at with a local citywide banks that got a small allocation through Morgan Stanley of a few million dollars, and we're going to try to leverage, and we'll update you on that as we go forward. May was the target for completed demolition, for those of you that went by the site in May, I think we did meet that deadline. We're doing some final cleanup there, though, along with contract closeout at this point. You also received a update on our ICSC trip a couple of weeks ago, so I won't go into those details, but we did meet with several developers, and again, continuing to build our database of people that may be interested in partnering with us on the property. As I mentioned, the abatement and demolition is essentially completed, the contract will be wrapped up, we hope, later this quarter, which started today. The EDA grant, just to remind you, we retained Ricker Cunningham due to a feasibility study that was presented to you in January of two thousand and thirteen. We did submit it to the federal government to meet our grant funding. As soon as we have a final copy of that, which we expect within thirty days, we'll put that in a PDF and get that emailed out to all of you, so you've got the final report and all the data that went into it. The staff is closing out that grant again within the next month or so. I do want to remind you of this concept plan that you saw floating around with the feasibility study. I really just want to point out what this is and what it isn't. It's really just a massing study that took all of the data that was collected by Ricker Cunningham to see how it would fit on the site. So again, these are really gross numbers in terms of retail office, number of housing units, and things like that. This is not the approved plan, this is not zoning or anything like that. We're really using this as a talking point when we're presenting it to developers, and it's also helping us when we start to develop vision documents for this site, which I'll talk about in just a minute. Boys and Girls Club, I believe Ms. Martinez came to the meeting a few months ago to give you an update on that. Fundraising is underway based on their preliminary designs. As of May, they were at nearly fifty percent of funds raised. I just heard from Mr. Williams today that they're fifty-six percent, so they're making progress. They have told us all along they need to reach eighty percent to commence construction. So based on this timing so far, it looks like two thousand and fourteen, we could be looking at, at a minimum, some site planning and entitlements and maybe vertical construction as soon as next year. We are going to take those concepts that they've developed and integrate those into the larger plan for the project, again, keeping in mind that the corner of Sixty-second and Holly is the preferred location, which is what we're committed to today. Gap financing tools. During the feasibility study, Ricker Cunningham came up with their scenario of maybe public financing that would have to be brought to the table to facilitate the concept plan that you saw. Rather than get into the details of the percentages and things like that, we don't really know those until we have a developer on board, but what we started to do is take a look at what tools are available to us. And Roger and the finance team did a really good job of summarizing these in a several-page memo, which we've been kicking around at the staff level, but I just want to run through those very briefly so you understand what we're talking about. Number one is really contributions to the land and site improvements, including drainage, off-site roadway improvements, parking lots, things like that. That was one of the things that we could probably add value to the site when we have a concept plan developed that would really defray some of the risk for a developer. Tax increment financing, again, because this is within an urban renewal area, those tools are available to us under state law. Property and sales tax are the most common types of tax increment that are used, and we're also very diligent in watching the legislature on an annual basis to make sure that those rules don't change on us, so we don't have to act especially quickly. A public improvement fee, for those of you that have been up to the Prairie Center in Brighton, they have a public improvement fee on that property. Essentially, it operates like a one percent sales tax that goes back to retire debt for the infrastructure that was used to build that project. Again, that's a tool that's available to us, but again, we'd be adding to the tax structure of the site in terms of what the retailer would have to bear and the consumer. Special improvement districts, I think we're all very familiar with those. That's how the Northern Range was really built by the development communities, by using these Title Thirty-two Metro districts. That's an option for us on this property as well, again, where we can put additional mill levy on the site if we need to pay for infrastructure. A few other ones I'm going to skip through quickly. The one at the top of the list there, I think we're very proud of this, that we have streamlined development approvals, and I'm going to talk about how we're going to try to get some of the entitlements at least started even before we have a developer in place to help get that going a little quicker. Low-income housing tax credits, we have always portrayed this project as a market rate, multifamily project on that side of it, but I wanted to point out that those tax credits are available, we do have a housing authority. If we ended up doing a low-income project or a senior project of sorts, we, those are available to us. Other grants and loans, those are too many to list right here, but those are available. I mentioned the new market tax credits. I'll just talk briefly about that. Those are job creation credits that you get for investing in the property. The equity investor actually forgives part of their loan to the project, and so it's a really good way to leverage a private developer's investment in the site. And so we're continuing to look at those on a small scale for startups in the community, but we don't have an allocation here in Colorado, so we may end up going with a national CDE or taking another shot at it with the two thousand and fourteen allocation. EB five, I believe I mentioned this before in other sessions, this is run by the Immigration Service of the United States, where they actually have foreign investors that will pay half a million dollars to invest in a project, and in exchange for that, they get a green card, and, which can ultimately lead to citizenship. So there are several programs that are available out there, but China seems to be the biggest supplier of these types of investors. We have made contact with someone here at the local regional center, they think it's a viable project, so we're going to continue to look at those options. Market rent or market sale write-downs, essentially what this means is that we're in such a good land position in terms of our cost basis that we may want to write down rents for a short period of time, or even write down the cost of land as part of our incentive to get a developer on board. And then, definitely not last on the list, but we need to consider private sector financing as well, and this could come from the developer when we bring them on board. They could bring their money to the table, get some of their skin in the game, if you will, get some of their risk out there, so that we are true partners when we're going forward with the project. Real quick on the budget, just to remind you that URA received a four million dollar loan from the city for the purchase and initial operating expenditures. We came back to you and asked for an additional two and a half million dollar loan for the abatement and demolition. There's approximately five point seven six million that has been spent to date out of the six and a half million, so we still have some operating capital available. Here's the detail that's broken down. The initial demolition contract was two and a half million dollars, so you can see where a bulk of that money is going to go to finish out that contract. The rest of the money really is just to maintain the property, security, utilities, maintenance, and so forth. There's a small amount of outside expertise that we're still using with Mr. Goldberg. We intend to have him on board with us through the fall to help us through the RFQ process as we start to look at developers. So the next steps for the staff at this point, we do have a draft request for qualifications from Ricker Cunningham. It was really just a template, what we could use to build off of before we go out and start to recruiting developers. We completed our review of that, and over the next, I would say thirty to sixty days, we're going to be developing a formal strategy for the RFQ and interview process. And just to make a distinction here, we're not talking about an RFP, where we're bidding like a road or something like that. This is really just having developers submit their qualifications to us, example portfolios, financial capability, and then we would narrow that list down and do some interviews, and we were even thinking there may be a role for the URA board in that process, because you're going to have to ultimately decide on who our partner is on this project. We're also working on development of a vision book, as well as the PUD concept schematic, and let me explain what those are. Stapleton Forest City was developed with what they call the Green Book. It has extensive design guidelines, very, very detailed. We are not talking about doing something quite like that. We think it'd be more along the lines of the Victory Crossing Design Guidelines. We presented that to you, I think, about a year ago. Again, it's a staff-approved document, really just outlines what the vision is for the site, really getting the developer to buy in and understand that that's what we're going to want to implement on the property before they partner with us. The PUD concept schematic, again, these are zoning documents, but they only go through the planning commission, they are advisory only, really, but it would take that concept plan and start to bubble diagram it out, try to get the first step of the entitlements done, and if a developer came on board, even after that was completed, we would still have an opportunity to change that and modify it as we needed. But again, it would be showing to the private development community that we're very serious and we're trying to get this going as quickly as possible. Infrastructure analysis, again, there was a lot of analysis done in the feasibility study. We have identified there are going to need to be some capital improvements probably to spur some development on that site, so we're continuing to look at those. We also have coordinated with the South Adams County Water and Sanitation District to understand what water credits we have on the site, because there was definitely a lot of water on the property to run the Greyhound Park, and so we want to make sure we can leverage those in the new development. The next few items are really part of the continuous process, there's no real deadline on them just yet. We're continuing to meet with developers both formally through appointments at ICSC, as well as informally through our local contacts. The economic development team is continuing to reach out to businesses, retailers, office, end-users for the site. The thought process behind that is we're not getting out in front of the developer, but if we can partner with somebody and say, we've got this sit-down restaurant that's ready to go here, we just need you to help us close the deal, that's going to go a long way in getting this project moving. Continuing the financial analysis and identifying sources of financing. And then the last one there, if you recall, the northwest corner of the site we showed is a land bank for an education partner, and so we're developing a work plan right now to actively and aggressively pursue that education partner, but recognizing that financing is probably going to be the key component that we're going to have to bring to the table to make that happen, at least today. So again, we intend to provide another update before the end of the year, and we've got all the updated information on the website, and I'm available for any questions.
Thanks, Jim. Does the council have any questions regarding the update on the Dog Track property? I think we're all very excited about having something take place there that's going to be beneficial services to our residents. Don't want to rush something too quickly, but I think we're all there to encourage you to continue to look for that master developer. All right. Okay? Mr. Teeter, you have something?
Just a short thing, Jim. I'm sure we're going to get, we haven't already, questions about the weeds on the property and things like that. Is that going to be the current developer, or is that going to be something we're going to take on?
No, we faced this issue last year, and when we bought the property, in fact, so we'll definitely need to maintain it and mow the parking lot. Yes.
Great. Seeing no one else, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to administrative council business. Does the city manager have any administrative business to handle this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Three items. One is, we seem to be having executive sessions fairly regularly, and we do have a need for executive sessions at both the July fifteenth and the August fifth meeting. The July fifteenth executive session would be to discuss some water contract issues. The August fifth executive session would be for the purpose of discussing economic development incentives. So the action tonight would be for council to agree to start those two meetings at five thirty for the purpose of executive sessions.
Okay. Mr. McLeDany?
I had two items for a...
We need a motion to...
Oh, sorry.
That's right, I was looking for a motion. Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve the special early start times for the fifteenth, the meetings of the fifteenth and the meeting of...
August fifth.
August fifth.
Okay, I have a motion for five thirty start time for executive sessions on those dates. Is there a second, Mr. Teeter?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Go ahead and continue, Mr. McBroom.
Thank you, council. The second item is, in the city manager's report this evening, we included a letter that we've drafted for the mayor's signature, our application for a waiver of certain requirements of the quiet zone that was installed at Ninety-sixth Avenue and Highway Two. That waiver application has been submitted to the Federal Railroad Authority. The application is now in the public comment period. It's a sixty-day period where anybody can comment on the application. We've taken the liberty of drafting a letter for the mayor to sign on your behalf in support of the application that we can submit during this public comment period. Additionally, we're reaching out to as many folks as we can think of, asking for their support, including other communities in Colorado that are dealing with railroad noise. So the... So the second request tonight from staff under administrative council business would be for city council authorization for the mayor to sign that letter in support of our waiver application with the FRA.
I'm looking for a motion. Mr. McElhany?
So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow myself to sign the letter for the railroad quiet zone crossing letter to go out. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Mr. McBroom?
Final item. We are looking ahead to the city council budget retreat on August 26th. Traditionally, we start that retreat at 3:00 in the afternoon. The last few years, that budget retreat has been held in council chambers to allow city council to facilitate the meeting being live on Channel 8 and on the website. But I wanted to ask council if that would be your preference this year. Staff thought the winter council retreat in February at the MSC went pretty well. In some ways, it's a better location for that kind of meeting, but we're not able to have the meeting live on Channel 8 or on the web. But before we moved ahead and scheduled the budget retreat here in council chambers, wanted to see if council had a feeling, one way or the other, on where you'd like to hold the budget retreat on August 26th.
Okay. Council have any comments or recommendations for where we hold the budget retreat? Anybody? Mr. McElhany?
You know, we've had historically, as the city held the budget retreats, whether it was at the MSC or even in off-site locations, and moved to host those study sessions and the ultimate retreat here in these chambers for the reasons that you mentioned. And I think one of the big things that we've been trying to do for years now is get more and more involvement in terms, and visibility to the discussions. And we heard a great example tonight with pavement management, where that was something that we talked about in the study session, outside the public eye in terms of a broadcast. And I think we need to, even with the challenge of setting up the room, I think it's important that we have the opportunity, A, broadcast it, and B, record those sessions and make them available so that as we're in discussion with our community, we can refer folks back to those archives and let them take a look. Otherwise, we have that challenge of each of us walking away and telling a different story from a meeting as opposed to being able to point back to somebody and say, "Hey, here's, you know, here's the link to the meeting where we talked about budget. Hear it for yourself." So I would suggest that we hold it right here in a room that we own.
Does anyone else have a comment on that item? Mr. Douglas?
Yeah, I agree with Jason that transparency is a big deal. We need to make sure we stay focused on the budget and get our citizens to understand that process and actually see us go through that process, because it is a lot to take on and having to go back and see for themselves on their own leisure would be a great opportunity for us.
Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? I have a lot of people lit up on my lights. That's why I'm asking while we're in discussion on this topic. Okay, seeing no one else, that gives you direction. I'm fine with that. I think it's appropriate to hold it here and be able to put it on Channel 8. Now we'll move into additional council administrative business, and I think that's what most are waiting for. Mr. McElhany, you will be first.
Thank you. I had two items. First, it happened just on my way to council tonight. I had to cut across town from a doctor's appointment over at Porter, and I ended up coming through along Brighton Boulevard and ultimately 56th. And so two things I encountered just in that small stretch. The segment of 56th, once you cross the tracks and are heading back toward Vasquez/Colorado/2, is in abysmal shape. I don't know if anybody's traveled that lately, but it's...
Horrible.
It's beyond bad. I mean, it gets a lot of use. I get that, and it's, you know, it goes in and out. But I was pretty surprised at just how bad it was. Once I got under 56th right at Sand Creek and had come under the overpass, I had to swing wide, as did the car in front of me, and fortunately, so did the two cars behind me, because we had a gentleman using a handbike, familiar with the three-wheeled. Transportation for somebody who doesn't, can't ride a regular bike, they ride a handbike. And I need to go drive by it again to look at it fresh, but this gentleman was forced to be in the road. There was sidewalk present. I don't know that we had a wide enough segment of sidewalk for him. And the concern is that for him to make the final jaunt under the overpass and get, I assume he was heading toward the Sand Creek Trail and to our trailhead. What I could see in the rearview mirror in that fleeting moment is that he veered back onto the sidewalk. So I don't know what caused him to be in the road in the first place and then get on the sidewalk, but that last segment that he jumped on looked to be overgrown with weeds. So I don't know if we can please take a look at that. I'd just like to understand what the conditions are there and what of that is ours, what might be part of the highway component, because it's right there. I assume that's our piece of sidewalk that abuts the overpass structure, but I can't say for certain. But it just was a great reminder of, and, you know, I've given the folks with Shea a hard time about this in our own brand-new community, right? You need continuous segments of a sidewalk or a surface if we're trying to encourage multimodal transportation, whether it's a bike or a wheelchair or, you know, a pedestrian. We can't have instances where we're forcing people into a street and then back onto a sidewalk, especially where you've got that dangerous corner, because folks are just going to burn. I mean, they burn around that corner every time I've ever driven through there. I mean, people cut that tight, and I was just amazed to see folks luckily, again, swing wide through there. So if staff can please take a look at that, I would appreciate it. The second is just a reminder, I will be, I have a family vacation planned to be out of town starting the Friday after the 4th, and I will be out of town for that first council meeting next week.
Study session.
Study session. I would miss the study session. Thank you.
Next, we'll go to Mr. Benson.
Yes, thank you. I just want to move to request council approval to authorize the staff to begin exploring amendments to the liquor code to permit variances to the 500-foot school setback requirement. And of course, this is triggered by the Stellato situation over in 104th and Chambers and its proximity to the school and how you measure the distance. But I just want, the staff has come up with some alternatives, but I think they need more time. And this would be a sit-down restaurant. It's not just for him. It'll be generic for anybody that would meet the same requirements. But I'd just like to authorize the staff to begin exploring amendments.
Okay. I have a request from Mr. Benson to direct staff to explore what we can do about the distance between the school and a restaurant business that desires alcohol-related beverages.
Yeah, a restaurant hotel liquor license.
Gotcha. Be a restaurant hotel liquor license. Is there a council person that would like to make a motion to allow staff to do that?
I would second that motion. This has been an item long-incoming. I think it warrants proper discussion, so thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to allow the staff to put together the information, and we can have that discussion in the study session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Mr. Galen? Just clarification, is that for hotel and restaurant liquor license only?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that was the motion.
Isn't that your understanding, Brian?
It's my understanding that's the license Mr. Stellato seeks. It's really a council decision how narrow you'd like our investigation to be.
Of course, it's not intended for him specifically. It's got to be a generically worded statute so that it would apply to anybody in the same situation, but...
But not a tavern license, for example?
No. I think everybody agrees that we don't want a tavern that close, right?
Okay. Is there any discussion, because I still have a lot of people lit up here, any discussion on Mr. Benson's motion and second that was approved? Mr. McElhany?
I just wanted to add to this, and this has come up when we talked about the Victory Crossing Plan. It's come up when we talk about redevelopment of the Mile High Greyhound Park. It's come up in a number of contexts where the way that the current language and our regs is outlined, it would prevent us from allowing the same kinds of development that we see at Stapleton Northfield or places in Denver, et cetera. And I think it's very important that we think about, again, in a current day and age, what the intent and the spirit and the intent of those decisions were and how those are reinterpreted and applied today. And so I know that we're obviously here to talk, and the motion's specific to the Stellato property, but I think it's important that when we talk about this, we think about it in the broader context so that we have a discussion once to reset things and make sure, A, that we're all on the same page about what it is we can and can't do today, what are the limitations of the Stellato project, and what might be impacts elsewhere in the community if we don't take action, if that makes sense.
Good call. It would be, next time it may be on Applebee's or Fridays or something that we need to provide services and we're so narrow on our ordinances. All right, now moving on with more discussion on this item only. Steve?
Yes, and just to, you know, we did talk about this last year about the radius and all that and different types of establishments as well on those different targeted areas. So this will not be the first time we've had a discussion on this topic. And we also need to also look at the liquor laws to see what the liquor license, how that falls into play too, because this falls in with, under those guidelines as well. So I think that should be first looked at through the liquor license before, as council takes approach on that. So I agree in the study session, but I think the liquor license needs to be the first avenue since it deals with liquor.
Right.
Mr. Douglas is correct. There was a study session sometime last year looking at the separation requirement in the Land Development Code between liquor-licensed establishments. We'd be happy to resurrect some of that information on that particular aspect of liquor licensing. Mr. Benson's motion was about a separate section of the code dealing with setbacks from schools and just asking us to look at potentially an amendment that would allow a variance or a reduction to that provision under certain circumstances.
And it would be a legislative matter which would control what the liquor authority can do.
I'm going to go over here to the city clerk.
You're talking about two separate things. First off, you have state statute and state regulations, which is what we're talking about in regards to the Stellato location. And that is a state statute and a regulation that regulates that there are liquor licenses, all types of liquor licensed 500 feet from a school. So what you're talking about is drafting an ordinance to either eliminate that for one class of license, several classes of license, whatever. That's one area. The second thing that you're talking about is in the Land Development Code, which is the city's specifically 2,500-foot requirement from location to location. So you're talking two different codes. You're talking state statute and LDC.
But doesn't the city have the authority under state law to modify those distances?
Yes, they do.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else on this topic? Seeing none, we're going to move forward. Mayor, Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. What's going to ask about, just a second here. There's been a lot of talk and requests. I've been to quite a few golf courses and inside the restaurant area, they have Wi-Fi. And I know that there's been talk about Wi-Fi at Buffalo, I mean, at Bison Grill, and it's needed. A lot of golfers have been asking for that. And it's nice to go up there and have lunch or so and do business there. I mean, that's, that is an option. It would be nice, though, if we did provide Wi-Fi for the patrons that come there and want to have a meeting. The other thing is the update back in June 10th of this year, city manager report about Eagle Creek. It wasn't the area, that northeast area in Eagle Creek. It wasn't the property condition. It was what's going to be the use of that property that was identified, not the fact that we're weeds and everything. And then there's a sign, there's an off-ramp sign that says "Yield." When you go, when you're going north on Vasquez as you approach 58th Parkway, 60th, I mean, it's an intersection that has seven different ways you can go. It always seemed those cars are confused that the traffic that's on Vasquez going north has to yield to people coming off, I mean, coming off the highway, the off-ramp, onto Vasquez instead of those folks yielding for the moving traffic. So maybe if we can look at that yield sign, make sure it's, maybe it's been hit or something where it's turned. Just a correction, maybe it needs to be repositioned. And then I was going to ask, through our newsletter that we put out every month, if we can explain to the folks in Commerce City how special tax districts are positioned and the reason why we have those, especially in the northern area. There's been some confusion on taxes, basically thinking that the city is receiving a certain amount of funds, which we are, and we've been, we've talked about this several times. But if we can just clarify that, especially going to budget time and everything and the difference between that we do not control our water, South Adams does. So that's it. Thanks.
I think we need to take your first item up as a request to the council to ask staff to explore the Wi-Fi service. So if you're making a motion to have the staff explore what the costs of increasing the services at Buffalo Run to include Wi-Fi, I'm looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to allow the staff to look into the Wi-Fi services that have been requested at the Buffalo Run Golf Course. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. It gives some staff direction. And Mr. McBroom, you had some discussion?
We have come up with estimates in years past. We'd be happy to freshen those up and present it as part of the Parks and Recreation Budget, which golf is a part of for the 2014 budget process, which is coming up in the next several weeks, anyway.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McElhany? Okay, Councilman Elliott. Every time I click it, your name comes back on. It just goes off and it comes back on. Uh-huh, it does. Councilman Elliott?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few things. First off, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Access Housing, and we're going to have our gala, which is a fundraiser that's going to be scheduled September of this year. I don't have a specific date, but I had confirmed with city manager McBroom that I would be able to pay for the annual membership fee using my discretionary funds, which is $100 annually. So with council approval, I'd like to know if I would be able to do that and be able to also solicit some seats at a table. One of the requirements is being a board member is that I have to sell eight seats. So this is my opportunity, while I have you captive and live on TV, that I could solicit your business.
Well, I think Access Housing, isn't that under our administrative budget that we also participate with that event?
Just one minor clarification. Annual membership fee of $100. Although you couldn't use discretionary funds, there is money in the city council budget, the legislative budget for that, so with council consent...
I think that would be more appropriate. That's why I brought it up, the administrative budget, because I thought we already normally purchase seats for Access Housing.
The Access Housing Gala, although not a budgeted event, that would be an appropriate use of discretionary funds for council members who would like to attend.
Great.
Just have to let us know. We'll have staff send out information about the event, let them know what the cost is.
Not only that, what is on discretionary, Bob can handle anything under a certain amount, and I don't even know if that's something that would have to come before the council. Correct, Bob? $100 item, I think you can just go right...
And the seats are $50 per seat, per person.
Okay.
I have to buy mine from Christina.
I know. She already got ahold of you, but I've got the rest to council.
Okay, we got that one covered. Okay, we got that one covered.
I've got a few other things. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I've had a few complaints, and I'm not, you know, I did some research on good old railroad, 72nd Avenue, east and westbound at Highway 2, right in front of the Easy Pond. Those tracks are so terrible to drive over. I drive over them numerous times, but it's a matter, if you can take it at an angle, it's not as, well, it's still terrible regardless. But I just wanted to see if that was something that had been addressed previously or if I missed it, but I've gotten a few calls from some people, and then, of course, I witnessed it myself several times, and I figured I should bring that up. Let me do some research on that. Okay. And then, I want to extend congratulations to my colleague, Councilmember Mackel Downey, for his bike MS over the weekend. Support you 100%, and I know it's for a good cause, so I just wanted to give a shout-out. And also, I didn't get the opportunity, but I want to thank the residents for allowing me to go to the CML Conference, the Colorado Municipal League. I did learn a lot there. In fact, I'd like to work closely with Carolyn in regards to some activities that I, well, I say activities, but it's a number of programs that are relative to the Live Well program. And I think it would be very beneficial for our city, and that's something I'd like to implement here within the next few weeks, few months, something to that effect. Other than that, I just want to wish everyone a great Fourth of July weekend or holiday, and just be safe.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just to circle back briefly, the $100 Access Housing membership fee, again, there's money available in the legislative budget. That would be appropriate for council to take action on, just to make sure we're spending that money according to council direction.
We appointed her to that board, didn't we? When we do our council... Board appointments? Board appointments.
So, I had approached Dominic and asked him if there was a possibility that I could also be on that board, and then, at the time, the executive director had two openings, and so, myself and another individual had applied, and that's how I was able to get onto the board.
Isn't a council appointment board?
No.
No.
The council doesn't appoint to Access Housing.
Okay.
And it was basically because Dominic was leaving his seat as a council representative, is what sparked my interest to be able to sit on the board.
Disappointed to it, Dominic was...
Access Housing Board appoints.
Dominic was on that board, but if it's not a city appointment, he may have been on that board, they just wanted another representative from the city. That's why Crystal's on it, even though it may not be an appointed board. So, do we need to approve something for her now, or can Bob and her take care of that through discretionary funds because of the amount?
I think the membership fee, the annual membership fee, based on how narrowly worded that discretionary fund policy is, would be better if council authorized that we had that membership fee out of the legislative budget.
And that's $100, correct?
Right. That's my understanding.
Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve the $100 fee being taken out of legislative budget?
Mr. Mackel Downey?
Second.
Motion is second to allow the $100 fee to come out of administrative budget. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Everything covered for you? All right, we're moving on. Mr. Amador?
I have a request of staff to look into a section of roadway along 72nd and Oneida, directly in front of La Casa Del Rey. Looks like there was some repair work done to utilities, and there's somewhat of a patch. It was a dirt patch with maybe, I'm not real sure what was on there, but the patch is about four foot by six foot wide in the westbound lanes, and over the weekend, that has deteriorated to about a two-to-three-inch drop hole right in the middle of 72nd, understanding that Fourth Fest is coming up and that road will be utilized a heck of a lot to gain access or leave the city. Maybe we could look into that quite quickly, and that's all.
I drove over it today. It was a repair replaced with road base, but it is getting knocked out of there, and maybe we can get that patched before the Fourth of July event. Would you look into that, please? Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Yes, I've had a couple of complaints as I, the Walmart parking, well, right in front of Walmart at the bus stop, and this is a Walmart issue, but I think it's gonna take a little city pressure to get them to help them along. Right there at the bus stop, trash and dirt and graffiti, and right as you pull out of their lot, coming on to 60th Avenue to turn right, there is about a four-foot, well, a big pothole in their parking lot. And I would like for somebody from the city to make them aware of that pothole, because I've had citizens, I can't do a good workout at Direct Center if they stop me to tell me about potholes. So, I just like, they passed it on to me, I'm gonna pass it on and see if we can put a little pressure on Walmart to kinda clean up and straighten up their act a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Mr. Mackel Downey?
Sorry, this is...
Just keeps coming back. I'm telling you, it just keeps coming back. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I have one more thing. This is to Parks and Rec. I know back in June, or maybe it was end of May, I had distributed some literature out to Jim with progressive bike ramps, and to see, this gentleman liked to come out in August. It wasn't gonna be this month, but there's no way it could be put on the agenda, but see if he can come out like, well, he liked to come out, I mean, August 19th and do a short presentation before council on the projects, outline just from trails, pump tracks, just different things that deal with bikes and within the city, as far as courses, and that would be conjunction with our trails. So, if that's all of council, if we could work that in for August 19th, just a week prior to the study session of budget.
Okay. What do you think?
I mean, yeah, just to recap, I think, if folks aren't familiar, Steve found a vendor that puts together, essentially, they take compact areas of open space or floodplain or otherwise, and they're able to construct trails of various technical difficulty for people to essentially mountain bike in an urban setting. If anybody's seen some of the trails that sprang up in the Pacific Northwest some years ago with the wood ramps and teeter totters and the like, these are a wide range of things that allow a sustainable trail setup. It's not necessarily mud or rock or otherwise. They're a really intriguing product, and it's not unlike what the city of Greenwood Village did recently in terms of their mountain bike park that they built. If anybody drives along 225, along the dam road, on the west end of the dam road, right before Yosemite, I think it's Yosemite, you've got some development and some soccer fields. It's sort of a, it was a sort of forgotten triangle that sat between the dam, Cherokee High School, and 225 for years, and they've been sort of building out that park setup. They took a really odd piece of land, and they added more dirt to it and features, and they've created a very well-renowned now mountain bike park that gets a ton of use. And it's an interesting way to take advantage of at a low cost, create an amenity where you may otherwise have, you know, an eyesore. So, I think it'd be an intriguing presentation to hear, and as we think about long-term parks planning, it would be nice to know what might be available to us in that planning.
You need a motion to have the staff pursue looking into and bringing back information on that kind of a park?
I'm not seeing any objection from council. I will just note, it hasn't, hadn't been identified as a priority in prior surveying of community needs, but it also sounds like kind of a new thing that probably wasn't around the last time we did surveying.
I think it'd be intriguing to see.
Check into it, and we'll look to schedule it for August 19th. I'm not seeing any objections.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mackel Downey?
This was for him.
Okay. It came up again. It's just coming up, coming up. All right, I have a few items that I need to take care of. First, I want to ask the council to support me signing a letter concerning the I-70 realignment, the group that is trying to reopen the discussions concerning I-70's alignment, the state procedure of, you know, we went through the process, they've designated that it should stay on alignment, and my understanding is that it's about half the cost staying on alignment than putting it on to 70. This group is gaining a little steam. They have some representatives from the State House that are involved, a school board member, and from my understanding, a couple of Denver council members are getting intrigued by the discussion. They had another meeting the other night. I was sent an email about how that meeting went. I know we had a representative there ourselves, as did the county, as did Denver. What I'm asking for is the city staff to prepare a letter requesting support from our state representatives and state senators to support leaving the I-70 alignment where it's at, supporting the state CDOT on all the two years or whatever of study that they did to determine that's where it should stay. But since there's some state legislatures involved already, I think we need to get Mr. Moreno and the other three.
Jesse Ullaberry.
Yeah, Jesse Ullaberry, and I can't think of the other two, but I think we need to send it out to all of them, but I'm asking for the council to allow me to sign a letter basically saying, we want you to support and back us up on the state's decision to leave it on alignment. Mr. Mackel Downey?
I would absolutely support that. I would add, if the mayor's open to it, that, two things. One, to reiterate that these parties, we appreciate their interest, but they also didn't participate in that CDOT process, and there were numerous opportunities for these guys to step in at that point. I think the other thing that would be most intriguing, and this is based on an article that I read, it was actually a link from our news today, there was an opinion piece that had been submitted about this realignment initiative, and it referenced the redevelopment opportunity in that area, should this thing reroute, something in the neighborhood of $1.5 billion in potential benefit. I would be very interested to know, and I know this wouldn't be easy to necessarily determine, but how many of the people that are putting forward this idea have a first or second or third-party interest in the financial benefit should that area redevelop?
It's interesting you bring that up, because at the meeting, there was approximately 100 people. They asked how many were residents of the area? 10.
So, I think it's, I think whatever letter goes forward needs to not be shy in that regard. They are clearly, net-net, right, somebody has drawn a picture, and it was outlined in the piece that I read, that, no, it's a no-brainer, right? I mean, this is a, this area would be an exceptional redevelopment if you were to reroute that. However, state process, public input, analysis is done, you can't, you can't go through that again, and I can't see doing it for the financial interests of a handful of people at the ultimate cost of that project. So, if you're open to that, I would...
I am open to that. Matter of fact, I let the council know the other night when I was at the governor's house, having dinner with the other mayors and the commissioner, I brought it up to ask for his support, and he had the letter laying there on his island in his kitchen that showing regional support from Denver, Adams County, and Commerce City to leave it alone. We went through the process, we don't need to reopen that process, we need to keep it where it's at, as well as the fact that I've asked Commissioner Berry to do her bagels with Berry thing here again, and I will be addressing with her not only the I-70 realignment, but Highway 2 and the implications of improvements there.
Who is the school board member?
I don't know who the school board member is. I have the email, I have no problem forwarding it on. I know I sent it on to Brian, I can have the staff make sure the council all get a copy of the email from the group that is proposing this to reopen the realignment discussions. I think that would be appropriate so that you have it. Can you make sure they get that, right? Thank you. Now, I have Mr. Benson.
Did Mr. Mackel Downey make a motion?
Yes, he did.
Did you?
Yes, he did.
I will second the motion, and just add to it the fact that these discussions have been going on for about five years, not two or three years.
I agree.
About five.
They were going on in '07 when I left.
'06, '05, '06.
Maybe even longer than that, but, and as he said, if they didn't participate in these discussions...
I have a motion. Too late. I have a motion and a second to allow me to sign a letter going out to all of our state representatives and state senators and asking for their support on the I-70 realignment piece. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Mr. Douglas, did you have something else?
No, just your floor.
Okay. I have a couple more things that I wanted to go through. I really was intrigued by Mr. Mackel Downey's bike for MS program, and I received a 16th Annual TNI Summit, which is the elected officials' bike ride, 16th Annual TNI Summit, maybe something you would have an interest in. The host city this year will be Irving, Texas.
It's always a host city.
And so, I just thought it might be something you're interested in, and I'll make sure that I send that along to you.
What are the dates on that?
Let me look here, just a second. It's kinda small on my phone.
August 6th through 9th.
Is that what it is, August? Yep, August 6th at 7:00 a.m. is when the bicyclists start out.
How long is the ride?
I don't know, I didn't, I didn't read through all of it, Jim, but if you want it, we can make sure you have a copy of it as well. 16th Annual TNI Summit, I just forwarded it to Jason. If you don't mind, would you forward that on to Jim while I finish my discussion? That way, you guys all have it, but I just thought it would be intriguing to you because of your participation, if you're a bike rider. Next item that I wanted to bring up is the fireworks. I think it's important every year to reiterate the fact that fireworks are illegal in Commerce City, and for everybody that's at home listening and everybody that's here, I think it's important with, as dry a year as we've had, with the fact that 19 firefighters lost their lives yesterday, and they all continue to put themselves in harm's way with all the fires that are going on, extremely dry conditions, that folks in our community abide by that law and try to take your kids to fireworks displays like the one we have over at Dick's or somewhere else outside of our jurisdiction, in a jurisdiction that will allow fireworks, because I think it's appropriate that we have that law in place, given the fact that we spend a lot of money for the opportunity to have the fireworks display that we have that's professionally done and with the support services of South Adams and everybody else making sure that it's a safe display, that you have the opportunity to come and enjoy one of the state's largest fireworks display here in Commerce City. But with that comes the responsibility of not participating with fireworks personally in your backyards, because we don't need to incur any more damage or any more efforts against our firefighters to spread them thinner. So, I'd appreciate it if you would abide by that. Please come out and join the fireworks that we have that are there for the residents of this community, and please have a safe, enjoyable Fourth of July, and remember what that holiday is for, is our freedoms that we have here, our independence. So, think about those veterans that have put their lives on the line and continue to do so, so that we can continue to have that day to celebrate. With that, we'll go into reports. I'll start with Mr. Gaylor.
How about Mr. McBroom?
Thank you, Mayor. We did send out a city manager's report prior to this evening's meeting, a number of updates to council action items, including the westbound 104th Avenue right turn lane to northbound Chambers. There's some information there about the design of that right turn lane. We did have some information in it about the chip ceiling program. We've had quite a bit of discussion about that tonight already. An update on the water districts, water restrictions, some additional information about the comprehensive annual financial report that was discussed at last week's study session. We are letting, we put some information in, Adams County Board of Commissioners has selected option three as... Commissioners has selected option three as their new, uh, district map, going from three districts to five. We've got some additional information, uh, about the elections in the report as well. And then we provided an update on the, uh, the meeting last week regarding the I-70 alignment that the mayor mentioned, and, uh, we already talked about the Federal Railroad Administration waiver, council already approved that letter. And, uh, as we have been doing, we've included a look ahead to the city council work schedule. So, as always, please call or email with any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, I want to go over my reports. Uh, I think it's important, though, before I get into my reports, that I, I say that, uh, when we're, when we're expecting to have, um, discussions pertaining to, um, road and bridge items within our community, that we try to get our, uh, city engineer and/or representatives that work within the Public Works Department to answer some of the questions that I saw posed this evening. I'm not, um, discrediting any of our employees, I'm just saying that when we know we're going to have this kind of a discussion where we can ask pertinent questions about what the process is, what these costs are, what may be, I think it may have helped with our, our discussion tonight, so I would just ask that we, uh, we try to make sure we have a representative from that department here. I know, Jim, I know you're ultimately the boss of that department, but I think when it comes down to those technical pieces, that we need a technical person here that, that, uh, you oversee a lot of departments, I just, so I'm requesting, I noticed that tonight we didn't have a public works person here, um, whether it was Sam or Darren or, or someone that could speak to the process of chip seal. Um, I think that if we, we have enough fair warning, and I know there's nights where something hits us that we didn't know was going to happen, but on nights where we know it's going to happen, that we try to have those staff members here. So, just a request to me from, from now on, if, if we know something's going to be touchy subject coming up at a council meeting that we have, have that opportunity.
Certainly, uh, understand the concern. I think council policy, though, is when items come up during citizen communication, uh, the, the expectation is not to have as much discussion as we had tonight. We certainly did have a bit of a heads up and it would have been ideal to have them here, certainly. Uh, without, uh, without question, we'll have appropriate staff at the special meeting tomorrow evening.
Perfect, yeah, because with this thing being on such shorts, such short notice and then the contract being let on Monday, um, it, I think we could have dissolved some of that. Mr. McAldonny?
Just one quick point, um, and we've had talks about this before, I think we've really tried to, to be more flexible, and I think the mayor's done a great job of encouraging an appropriate level of dialogue at citizen communication, but I think this is one of those examples where, as we've said in the past, we need to be very quick to recognize the type of subject that it is and halt the communicate, the discussion at citizen communication and instead hear a motion to add it in a formal manner to our administrative council business. So, to me, and I, I was showing some frustration in the early part of that discussion because I really wanted to say, "Let's stop this, we're in the midst of citizen communication, let's add, add this subject to the agenda and make sure that we come back at the appropriate point in the agenda to, to have that discussion." In my opinion, and I'll look for staff to confirm this, it would have given staff even an hour, hour and a half, right, as we move through other elements of the agenda, to potentially get some additional information in the background that we could have potentially had a more constructive discussion on, um, as opposed to literally putting us all on the spot in real time. So, I would just suggest that we keep that in mind and, and I, I will genuinely credit you, I think we've done a, a really good job, um, with you helping to facilitate that citizen communication, but to me, that's just one of those where we could maybe head down that path and take some of the emotion out of it, right out of the gate before it gets going, and yet give it a very clear path forward where we're not going to not talk about it, we're just going to not talk about it for a little bit while we all kind of relax.
And I appreciate that. I think that, uh, this particular item, um, kind of snuck up on all of us. We know we were getting some emails and we were corresponding with residents, um, but tonight when we got here, I, I met with Brian just before the meeting, and we were supposed to try to get with you and Jim, um, to, to talk about it a little bit, uh, prior to the meeting, however, um, it came on real quick. I knew there was a point in time in the meeting we had to have the discussion, and really it comes down to postpone it or don't postpone it. I think the sma- the special meeting idea was, uh, a good resolve, uh, so that we can get the information we need, but, uh, sometimes it, it really helps if we have a professional here just to say, "Hey, uh, Darren or Sam, can you tell us about what alternatives there are?" You know, and, and maybe we could have, so I think there's some, some room to improve on our side as well, just like Mr. McAldonny said, but, uh, it's great when we, when we have those items that we know are coming up, we get that staff here. So, thank you. Now, I'll go into my report. Um, we had the Metro North Leadership Graduation. I did go, uh, I was there to support Julie Jacoby, one of our ED staff members that went through the, uh, program this year and graduated. Um, we had the ribbon cutting for McDonald's, I know, uh, most of the council was there, and, uh, great, a great, uh, opening of a, of a very nice new service here in, in the community. Restored the old with a brand-new facility that offers the, the jungle gyms and all of that. I think it was great that McDonald's donated to both the Historical Society and Alternatives for, to Family Violence, um, a couple nonprofits that we, uh, support here in the community. Then, uh, I did have, I did miss last Monday and, uh, Mr. Bullock took over the study session for me because I had a, uh, dinner at, at the governor's house with, uh, the Commissioner Tedesco and Mayor Hancock and Mayor Hogan, um, to try to, uh, wade through some of the airport issues. I think it was helpful to have a, just a, a normal conversation, um, and since we have had the Airport Coordinating Committee meeting and I met, uh, with Mayor Hogan and Commissioner Tedesco privately, um, before the, uh, meeting for the, uh, Airport Coordinating Committee, um, I had lunch with R.D. Seawald, went to Rotary, uh, let's see here, met with Mr. McBroom before the Airport Committee meeting, I did Rotary again, um, dinner, uh, with representatives from Tokyo, um, the trip that I took out to, uh, Japan and to Korea, those folks in Tokyo that we, uh, met out there did fly in to DIA and were here, and we showed them the same kind of respect they showed us, and, and I did attend a dinner that was put on by the, uh, Denver EDC, um, to, uh, welcome, uh, folks from Tokyo here. Then I had a meeting with Diane Evans. Uh, Diane Evans owns the Derby Tire Store at Seventy Second and Highway Two. Um, I know she has an interest in, uh, selling the, the business. Um, I don't know whether the city has an interest in the business, and that's what I relayed to her. I told her, though, we did have an interest in the property to try to widen that turn radius and take care of some other things, but, uh, I have turned that over to staff to, uh, discuss and put together, um, some opportunities of, if it's something that we want to, uh, pursue at this time or not. Um, was here for the fortieth celebration, as many other elected officials here, for, uh, Leonard Dietz, and I, uh, I, I congratulate him, um, for having, uh, that kind of, uh, ability to stay at one place for so many years and to provide such a service for our community. I then met with Stacy Gilmore from the Environmental Learning for Kids Program. Um, I know Bob's going to be working on and bringing back some information on whether we can hold a, a, uh, land trust easement or something of that nature, but, um, that's all in the legal department's hands at this point, and we'll be updated on that. And then, uh, I went over Saturday, and I want to thank the, uh, school district and the, the board of directors for the school disc, for allowing this to take place at the, uh, high school. Um, I know there were several city employees that were involved, and I, I want to thank them as well. I know there was an officer there, uh, helping with some training there for the, the kids, but we hosted the first, um, Colorado Kids Triathlon over at the high school. It was a, a neat event, the, the pieces that I got to see. And so, I want to thank everybody that was involved and, and, uh, the fact that Commerce City is, um, proceeding as a healthy environment for, uh, our kids, and as we heard the discussion earlier, that, um, kids now aren't going outside and being as active outside as we used to because there's, the technology has changed and you can be active with your fingers on a video game, and you don't have to go out and actually play frisbee or baseball or something of that nature. I think the Kids' Triathlon really helped to show that, um, when the parents are engaged, and there were a lot of parents there, um, that you can get the kids engaged, and, and these kids travel all over, um, doing these triathlons and stuff, and I, I thought that it was a, a good way to, to work on our healthy living, um, component here within the city. So, thank you for everybody that participated in that. And that's the end of my, uh, report. Is there anybody that has anything they want to add that I didn't mention? Mr. McAldonny?
Just real quickly, and I, I want to thank, uh, a couple of you for mentioning the, the ride that I participated in this weekend. Um, I don't try to brag about much that I do, but, uh, this in particular is an area that's near and dear to my heart. My, uh, my mom was diagnosed formerly with MS about three years ago, and we think now that she's probably been battling it for probably ten-plus years. Um, but when we learned about her diagnosis, it was one of those things where you quickly question, "What can you do? You can't fix it, you can't solve it," but, uh, you feel like you've got to do something, and, and it was clear that, um, she was struggling with what this meant to her and felt like she was fighting it on her own. I had heard of Bike MS, and I'm an avid cyclist, but had never participated, and suddenly I had a, a personal reason to do so. Um, so I called my dad and I said, "Hey, uh, let's start a team." And so, three years ago, we started a team with seven riders. Um, we were blown away by the support we got that first year and raised, uh, over eight thousand dollars with just seven riders, and received some recognition that year as the rookie team of the year, and we got a fundraising award, and it was like, "Wow, this is pretty cool, and we, we can do some good." We rode again last year and we had nine riders, and we raised just over ten, around ten thousand dollars, and so we were thrilled. Um, this year, we, uh, we grew our team to twelve riders, uh, we set a goal to raise fifteen thousand dollars, and with help from many of you, um, we are about three thousand dollars shy of that goal. Um, we are continuing fundraising until, um, early August, and so we're hopeful that we'll close that goal, but, uh, we'll have effectively doubled roughly our fundraising in just three years, um, and darn near doubled our team. So, very, very exciting. For those that aren't familiar with it, the event starts at, uh, Front Range Community College in Westminster and rides, uh, north to Fort Collins through any number of backroads uh, between here and there, and, uh, offers three different flavors. You can do a hundred miles the first day, or sixty-four miles the first day, or the traditional seventy-five that goes up and over, uh, Carter Lake and, uh, Horse Tooth Reservoir and then down into Fort Collins. And so, our entire team rode the seventy-five miles each day and, uh, just had an absolute blast. Um, one of the, the amazing things is, you know, I didn't train nearly as much as I normally do, and it's a, it's a tough ride, um, but as you're pedaling along and you're, you're feeling like your legs hurt, and you come up on somebody wearing a jersey that says, "I ride with MS," and you look at the, the focus in their faces as they're pedaling along, you quickly feel no pain. But again, thank you all for your support, and, uh, just wanted to share, share our efforts.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have two lights still lit up. I have, uh, Mr. McAldonny, I'm sure that's what that was for?
That is.
And, uh, Mr. Douglas?
No, I just want to say kudos to you, Jason, for, uh, supporting your family. I know what it's like when you, you have a, a loved one that's, that's sick and, uh, you know, there's, uh, you, you can sleep without pain, but they, you know, you, you know, they, they, they carry that every day. So, um, support you a hundred percent for, for doing that. Uh, I just want to thank, to thank everyone out there for, support me for going up to CML as, as well. Very educational experience. Um, I just want to ma- make sure that I acknowledge the fact that being up here, uh, it is a privilege, so I, I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing further to come before this council this evening, we are adjourned.
Starts at, uh, Front Range Community College in Westminster and rides, uh, north to Fort Collin-